Order. And does everybody have that agenda in front of them? Do we have any declaration of pecuniary interest with regards to the agenda for the committee of the whole this morning? Okay, seeing none. At this time, through Madam CEO, we have a delegation from our auditors or maybe through Kevin, and I'll pass this. So it's Victoria Watson and Tracy Smith from BDO. And this is for the 2019 Gray County audit. And so from that, I do, I do have it moved by Council Patterson and Council O'Leary for that to be recognized. But Madam CEO, do you wish to take over? Or we have Kevin, I can't, somebody's, I can't hear somebody on there.
Kevin, you're on mute.
I apologize, everyone. And Kevin Weppler, I believe you were going to introduce this item.
Yeah, this is our annual visit from, from Vicky and Tracy from BDO. So I think you're all very familiar with them. And they're prepared here to present their audit findings. And they are going to take control of the Zoom screen here and, and present. And I'd like to welcome them here. And, and Dan, we offer some other comments once, once they're completed and councils had their chance to ask some questions. So, welcome Tracy and Vicky.
Thanks, Kevin. Can, can everyone hear me? Make sure I'm, yeah, okay, I got, I got some nods. I was just laughing that, that my, oh, now I can start, apparently I could start my, no, I can't start my video. The host is not letting me show my picture. So I, although I don't have one of those burly beards, I am sporting the COVID gray look. But, but I apparently am not allowed to put my video on. So I'll just, I'll just, I'll just talk. So again, thank, thank the committee for, oh, no, just make me put my video on. So I'd like to thank the committee, Victoria, hello, hi, everyone. Victoria Watson is also on the call. And she is much younger than me. So she is in charge of the technology and, and sharing, sharing the screen. I'd like to thank Kevin and Mary Lou and Joanna and their team. They have, and for their patience as we learn to navigate our, our new virtual world here. We appreciate the support that they provide and the completeness and quality of the working papers. Everything is always in amazing shape for us to do the audit. And we thank them very much for, for that. So as your auditor, we have the responsibility to communicate with those charged with governance on an annual basis, which, which is you. The report that is on your screen includes all the, all the required communication under auditing standards. Many of these items are the same as in prior year, as the content is prescribed by those accounting standards. But we do have to communicate with you every year. So I'm going to provide just a brief summary of this communication. And then Vicky will do the high level overview of the draft financials and the graphical report. Since we are virtual, I think what we will do is after the, the wordy part will stop and, and ask if anyone has questions. And then again, at the end of the numbers, we can take any questions at that time. So the, just going through the summary of the communication to you, the status of the audit, the financial statements are draft. They can't be released and final until the council has approved them. Once we get that approval from the committee or council. Once we get that approval, we still need to obtain outstanding confirmations, assigned representation letter up to the date of that approval, and also some subsequent event work that we do up to the, the date of the approval. Amount, amounts are material if they would affect the decisions of users relying on the financial statements. The overall materiality was 2,750,000. Performance materiality is just over 2 million. And what performance materiality is used for, it's used to focus the audit and to identify are the amounts that we're testing through statistical sampling. We then take that performance materiality and we use thresholds of 10 to 20%. So, so down the 200, $300,000 range to look at some specific items and do some stamp testing and analytical procedures. In terms of the audit findings, our audit strategy and procedures, they were outlined in our planning report. I will report to you at the annual, at this, at the conclusion of our audit, that there were no changes to our planned procedures and no issues were identified in our testing. So, so there were no additional risks that, that arose out of the audit. Moving on to the internal control matters, we're required to report to you in writing any significant deficiencies in internal control. I am happy to report that during the audit, we did not become aware of any significant weaknesses in the design or the implementation of internal control. So there was no issues that, that we needed to report to the, the committee. Management representation, as I said, we have to obtain a management representation that they've, they've communicated all of the matters of a financial nature to us during the audits and that a sample is in appendix B. We are also required to disclose to you if we found any amounts during the audit that have not been adjusted in the financial statements. Although all adjustments have been made. The, again, Kevin and Mary Lou and Joanna, they do an amazing job on having everything complete and ready before we get there to the audit. So we actually did not find anything that, that needed to be adjusted during the audit either. So, so, so there are no differences that we are aware of in, in the financial statements that needed to be, to be fixed. Moving on to independence, we do confirm that we are independent on an annual basis. And auditing standards do require that we communicate on an annual basis and have a discussion on the responsibilities to prevent and detect fraud. We're not aware of any issues. And Vicky and I can be contacted directly if there are any concerns from the committee or from, 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 from management. You can be contacted directly. So that is a summary of the communication. I'm not going to go into detail with the remainder of the report. There, there are just some more details in there, but I will pause to ask if anyone has any questions before we turn it over to Vicky and the actual numbers.
Okay, well, thanks Tracy and to county counselors or staff. Are there any questions at this time? Well, Tracy, I hear none. I don't make comments from Kevin, but I hear, I don't hear any comments. So go ahead, carry on.
Okay, so we'll turn it over to Vicky.
All right. Hopefully everyone can hear me as well, and my video is also starting. Tracy complains about her gray hairs and perhaps being older than I. I just pull mine all back so you can't see them. They're all under, they're all hidden under the ponytail. My COVID cut is quite long. I probably need a haircut as well at this point in time. I might be able to out blast some of your beards. I'm not sure. But thank you very much for having us here today. I get the exciting part, which is all the numbers as well. So I'm going to start at page 13 of your package, which is the financial statement portion of the information. So starting with the independent auditor's report, I would like to advise that the format of the opinion has not changed since prior year. Our opinion is included at the beginning paragraph, and we can advise at December 31st, we are providing a clean audit opinion. And an audit is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. We did review these statements with management prior to today. And we have dated the audit report for today under the assumption that the drafts will be approved and recommended for signing by the treasurer, by the committee today. I'm going to advance to the statement of financial position, which is page 18 of your package. I'll give a brief overview of the statement of financial position. I'm going to draw your attention to the middle of the page, which is the net financial assets. So over the course of the year, there was an increase of nearly $4.2 million in your net financial assets. So if you took a snapshot at December 31st, that addition, additional amount would be the amount you have available to use in the future if you paid out your liabilities from your financial assets. This is evidence of a strong financial position. Under the net financial assets, you have your non-financial assets. The bulk of that number is represented by your tangible capital assets. So the physical investment in the county of Gray. There was an increase in the tangible capital assets of just under $6 million during the year, which consists of your new purchases of nearly $17.5 million net disposals and amortization of the year of 11.5 million. And we're going to look at that in a little bit more detail when I get to our graphical analysis. So when you consider the increase in the net financial assets and your increase in non-financial assets, you have an overall increase in your accumulated surplus for the year of just under $10.2 million. And you'll be able to see where this arises on the next page of the consolidated statement of operations and accumulated surplus and look at some of the, what makes up that accumulated surplus again in that graphical report. So going to the next page, which is the statement of operations and accumulated surplus, starting with the revenues, the largest variance in the revenues was in relation to the government transfers for the year. Projects that were anticipated to be undertaken with federal gas tax dollars or other projects and fundings were not completed during the year. So these dollars remain unspent in your deferred revenues to be used in future periods at the end of December. Looking at the expenses for the year, the expenses appear to be over budget by about $11 million. But that $11 million is actually the amount for amortization, which is not a budgeted line item as part of the budget on an annual basis. And I can show you how this works out again when we get to that graphical analysis. The bottom line, or the third line from the bottom shows the annual surplus for the year at that just under $10.2 million. And we'll go over to that in a little bit. Again, I'll just show you note six in a moment. But from this annual surplus, the county pays for the capital asset additions for the year, principal repayments on long-term debt and contributions to reserve. So I'd like to, at this point in time, if we could advance to page 27, that's where note six is, which brings that annual surplus back to the amounts that are shown under your budget reconciliation. So there we go. So under the budget note six, we start with that annual surplus number, as I showed, of the just under $10.2 million. But from that, there had been transfers to reserves recorded. There were anticipated transfers from reserves, capital acquisitions, the amortization of assets, the debt principal repayments, any changes in unfunded amounts. So when we look at this note, it does show that the amounts do net to zero in accordance with how you would have had this information presented originally for your budget purposes. So that's how we start with the numbers. There are many, I wasn't going to go through all the rest of the many details of the financial statements, the notes and the significant accounting policies. But I was going to pause at this point in time to ask if there were any questions about the main financial statements before I go through the graphical report.
Okay, thanks, Vicky. And are there any comments or questions from county counselors at this point? Well, Vicky, they're, they're following along very carefully and carry on.
All right, so page 48 of the council package is where the graphical report starts. It's the one with the big blue front cover. So I'm going to go through the first page here, which has the where you, where are you today? And this is where I wanted to break down the accumulated surplus for you and provide a little bit, few comments on that. So if we're looking at the five-year comparison of accumulated share surplus, it shows evidence of a significant investment in the county of Gray infrastructure through the investment of tangible capital assets. The increase on that first line here, the net book value of tangible capital assets shows a net increase of over $35 million over the last five years. There's also evidence of an increase in reserves of $6 million over that same time period, showing again that you're investing into the future of the county of Gray. When we look at the next page, page 51 of your package, this is a document that shows where the cash flows for the organization originate from, whether it's from operating or there's cash flows that are outflows for capital transactions or financing. So just wanted to provide you a little bit of analysis on that one. The next page we go to is the tangible capital assets. So when assets are originally purchased, they are measured at the cost when acquired. So that's the historical cost of those assets. And then those assets are then amortized or expensed over a period of time, which is considered to be the useful life of those assets. So just the bar graph at the bottom of this page shows the investment in tangible capital assets increasing over the last five years as the replacement policies are being undertaken. Another neat graph to see is the revenue information for the last four years and the budget, which is shown on the page on the screen. So this pie chart shows that the source of funding percentages are close for the taxation and government transfers. And they have been quite consistent over the last several years. So we'll have to see where that goes into the future. And where I was sort of alluding to previously, when we look at the expenses comparison to budget in the right to most columns here. I have to say that when we exclude the amortization from those calculations, which is shown on the main audited financial statements, the county expenses came in within $32,000 of budgeted costs. And considering the magnitude of all the transactions for the county of Gray, I felt that was quite a statement to be able to say and give credit to council and management for achieving their goals with such precision overall. So when we do go to look at that information graphically, we see that the expenses by function at the top of this page, this pie chart, the top four expenses that are providing services to the Gray County communities, long-term care, social services, and then tied for therapy, paramedic services, and social housing. And to be able to provide those services to the individuals and businesses in Gray County, we need a lot of staff. And so you'll see that in the second pie chart on that page, payroll costs are the highest percentage of costs for the organization with other transfers providing funding to other organizations and individuals in the Gray County communities as well. Our next page on page 56, maybe a report you're familiar with in the past, I'm not going to go through it in detail. It is prepared by management and summarizes the surplus allocations at the end of the year and any other transfers that were budgeted over the course of the year. So that information is for your summary purposes. And then the last two pages we go through describe the reserves. So as I discussed previously, we have shown an increase in the amounts that have been available to be used in the future through the county of Gray. And graphically, this shows that the county is transferring to reserves for future capital expenditures, with a large portion of the reserve balances being used for those reserves for capital purposes. And the last page, again, showing the obligatory reserve funds and again, supporting that there are still amounts retained for future expenditure with the gas tax dollars being on hand at the end of the year due to projects not being undertaken. So at this point in time, I was going to conclude the financial portion of the presentation. And then again, I would like to say same similar to Tracy. Thank you to the management team, the staff and council for assistance with the audit during this course of the year's audit. Their level of preparation facilitated the, my audit team without their documentation, this definitely would have been a lot less efficient and effective during these interesting times, I will say. So again, thank you very much to everyone at the county of Gray.
Well, thanks, Vicky, and thanks to you and everyone else for the great work that you do. And again, a kudos to Kevin on that $117 million, $32,000 difference. That's pretty, pretty impressive, I would say. So other questions to, to our presenters from county council? Or comments? All right. So this report was moved by Council Patterson and second by Council O'Leary. Seeing there's no other points, any opposed to these reports? Hearing none, those carried. Well, then I want to thank to our presenters again, thank you very much for today, all the great work you do in presenting here today. And I don't know, Kevin, do you have any last comments or?
Yes, I do. And thank you again, thank you to Tracy and Vicky and their staff. And it was a different year with COVID-19. We're down to about 10 days worth of work trying to get our, our working papers together when we shut down the building and, and, but I have to admit, the finance team, they stayed at it and kept coming in and working on these, trying to get done so that we would have all this information for the auditors to perform their work. And we took the, I trucked 11 banker's boxes down to the audit to have all our working papers and do this, and they scheduled that with us and that. So that was very much appreciated. I do have to thank all my staff. They worked hard on this. For the first part of the, of the preparing the audit working papers, I was stuck at home, self-isolating as I had been to Florida when the outbreak happened. So I have to give accolades to Joanna and Mary Lou for leading that group and, and staying with it. So, and I do, and looking at the financials, it's a testament to the staff within, you know, the limited, no corrections are needed and then the controls are in place and the staff are following them. So I want to thank them for that. I also want to thank council with budgets and stuff. I think you're seeing on our tangible capital assets that we're starting, the investments are paying off, that we're starting to show our net assets are increasing and that we're, the amount that's being amortized, we're actually spending more on our betterments of those assets. And that is a testament for you committing a budget time extra dollars to capital. So, so thank you very much for that. And again, thank you to BDO and all of the finance staff.
Okay, well, thanks, Kevin. And behalf of myself and county council, I want to sincerely thank you and your staff for all the hard work you have done leading up to this, to this audit report and all the great work you do throughout the year and especially with the COVID-19. And so again, thank you for that. All right. So again, I guess that your guests or I guess if they want to stay on, they can watch a lot or whatever. But again, thank you again for doing the great work that you do. And, and we'll say goodbye for now.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Bye.
I know. Some would say you can have the rest of the day off, but I don't know if somebody could say that or not. But all right. So moving on to our agenda then, we have a consent agenda. And that was moved by Council O'Leary and Council Mackey. Are any of those items wished to be pulled for separate discussion later on of that consent, consent items? And that's moving from A to A to E. So any of those items wish to be pulled? How I hear, I hear no comments. Give her maybe a second there to take a look. Again, that was moved by Council Larry, second by Council Mackey. Hearing no discussion, no, nothing being pulled forward. Then anybody opposed to those items on consent agenda? That is carried. Okay, thank you very much. So then moving on now to our items for direct production and discussion. We have then, this is a report from our finance director and corporate services, Kevin Weppler, and this is FRCW 1620. And I have it moved by Council Burley and second by Council Robinson. And this is with regards to our 10-year capital. So I'm going to pass this over to you, Kevin.
Thank you, Warden. Yeah, this, this report provides Gray County's third 10-year capital forecast. This is a planning tool that, that forecasts the county's capital expenditure requirements over a longer time horizon. This is the first time we're presenting this forecast virtually. So it's, there's been no hard copies handed out or, but the, there is links to the attachments that for the overall corporate summary and, and as well by each of our, our function breakdowns of corporate services, planning community development, social services and transportation and public safety. These summaries are generated by staff inputting, updating capital project forms. So for each of these line items in here, there's actual a project form that if you click on the link, it's in the report that takes you right to the 10-year capital forecast. You will find a worksheet or a project sheet for each project that details the, the project, the timing of it, how, and how it's to be funded and the need for that project. So I appreciate all the staff working away at these. And they, it was a challenge when we first moved to 10 years. And now with IT's help and we roll these forwards, staff just need to go in and update them and add the 10th year to the program. So um, the consolidated package represents the corporate capital funding needs for 2021 and the amount of $17,218,300, which is $801,100 higher than the net capital funding that was approved in the, in the 2020 budget or, or a 1.47% taxation increase. The, this is a living, I should say, and that 881,000 is a 1% for transportation for that's following our, our asset management. We're continuing to try to increase our spending on that as per the asset management plan recommendation. This is a living document. Any changes to capital spending made during the budget process will be incorporated and updated into future forecasts and, and whatever revisions are necessary to resource availability or inflation or need studies, building conditions assessments and another funding, funding levels that become available will also be incorporated into future updates. Table one in that report, it breaks down the 10 years by each of the function departments and totals them. And this is the, the net levy requirements that showed in this table. And again, for the 2021, it's, it's showing an increase of 881,000, 2022, 91,000. And like 2023 is 977,000. So roughly about, you know, one and a, one and a half to 1.6% increase. And that's incorporating that 1% for transportation. So I mentioned this, this 10-year capital forecast, there is a link to it and is, it is, can be found on our, on our corporate website for, for reference at any time or for the public to reference. There's some notable changes that we've made in the, and I'm, I'm just sticking with the first three years of the program. And, and I will, I'll begin with that. And if council's all okay with that, that's, I would like to just highlight some of these changes and that just kind of bring them to council's attention. And, and then I'll turn to each of the, the applicable departmental staff to speak to theirs and, and we'll go from there. So
Okay, carry on.
For, so for, in table two, the, starting off finance here, what's new? And we've added $100,000 under finance for our corporate procurement software and implementation. And we've got into the program for, for 2021, or it's new to the program for 2021. The county doesn't have an electronic PO system. It has been on our radar for a bit, but I have to mention with COVID-19 and the amount of requests for electronic POs and, and things like that, and trying to keep track of the commitments and stuff, it's game to the realization, it's, it's time that we, we need to move in this, in this factor. So we've, we've put this in here, it's being funded from reserves, but it's being included. But it's, I just wanted to bring into council's attention that is something new that wasn't in the plan last year. Yeah, the multi-user budgeting software is the second item I just wanted to highlight under finance. And that was, we're moving that back. We're currently just entering into our agreement on our work management software for transportation services. And with, and along with a procurement software, I'm going to push it back. It's just too much, too much at once for, for staff to, to implement together. So so then for the next item on human resources, I'll, I'll turn this over to Grant McCleavy to speak to.
Thanks, Kevin. And through you, Mr. Warden, good morning, council. There's a couple of notable items in here for human resources. We have the service. There's a couple of notable items in here for human resources. We have the service review that is ongoing actually right now. And also the job hazards and demands analysis is something that we're continuing to move forward with. It's, it's a great program. There's three other pieces on this capital budget. It's corporate scheduling software, human resources, software, and the market salary review. Given that what we're going through right now with the organizational review, we are thinking of holding off on these pieces and we continue to put money into the budget for it. But especially the software replacements, we think that this is not the right year. We're continuing on with it. And again, with the market salary review, we are going to be putting that on hold likely for another couple of years. Those are really just the, the notable pieces in this small capital budget.
Okay, thanks, Grant.
Next, I'd like Jody McCarty from IT to speak to the notable changes on information technology.
Thanks, Kevin. I will highlight some of the projects that we've either introduced or increased our budget planning for in this capital plan. So one of the new things we've added is ongoing security audits on a four-year cycle. Given how fast cybersecurity changes and what that landscape looks like and the amount of resources we have to throw at it, we consider that a fairly critical resource to bring in. We are trying to make that the timing with those sort of mesh with our IT strategy plans, which were already in the capital plan as well. Both of these tend to give us a lot of work, you know, big lists of little things to do and slightly smaller lists of larger projects. Really important to have done. We want to make sure that we have time. We had telephone system upgrades planned for this year. That's a project that while it was slow to even get started, we had a consultant planned as well. And just based on where those costs are going to come out and given everything that's happened this year, we've decided to push and I'm using the consultant next year to make recommendations on what we are going to need for a telephone system, what sort of the business requirements are and help to develop an RFP and also just review the accounts that we have with our carriers. You know, especially if we are doing anything at all that's comparable to current work situations with, you know, more people working remotely and less at the office. It's going to be We also had a project in this year for long-term care server replacements. When we started to look at that project, we initially found that it was going to be a lot more expensive.
So Jody, Jody, just for, just can you make sure you're speaking into your mic clearly because you're coming in and out?
Okay. I think that might be my computer because I'm already pretty close, but I will sit down and hope it's clear. We had planned on replacing the servers at each of our long-term care homes and that was going to be significantly more expensive. Because of our planning, we didn't have some of the software and licensing required. We were just looking at hardware and a like-for-like replacement. And so for our budget planning and transparency, we have included that properly budgeted for next year. However, even since then, in our ongoing negotiations with Dell, it, it would be far more effective or cost effective to do that this year. So I am going to bring a report to the next council session on what that would look like if we do it this year and ask to proceed with it. The ongoing costs and the lifespan in the council or sorry, in the capital project are correct for that project for, for the 10 years, other than this year where we would see costs. We've tried to balance some of these increases in, in the budget with technology choices to make sure we are getting the most cost effective. You know, choices when we go to market or getting the most return on our investments. So we have, we assessed our lifespans and IT technology. It doesn't have the longest lifespan. A lot of times it's five or seven years. So we've made sure that things like our switches and wireless access points, we're planning on going to the seven-year replacement cycle with them. Some of our core network infrastructure, we the big so we're still planning five-year life cycles for those. And there's a couple of other projects where we have been able to reduce the costs over the last few years. The ortho photography program that we participate in with the province has been a lot cheaper than it was 10 years ago. So we're showing those costs reduced. And our plan now is to continue with the same technology we have for wireless internet or wireless access points, which should be cheaper than we had planned in previous. That's it for my team. Do you have any questions?
I guess, Jody, just with regards to a comment that our C E O made a few months back, leading into COVID-19 is with county council of the next term, moving from, or whenever that will be moving from iPads back to laptops or whatever. And I'm not sure if you're capturing that or not.
No, traditionally it has been the clerk's budgets that have provided counsel with hardware. And certainly if that's a conversation of what technology best serves council, if that's a conversation you want to have, then we're certainly open to it.
Well, I think the, I think Madam C E O mentioned it a few months back when we're in, into technology, working from home. It has been a challenge with the iPads and I don't want to talk too much about that. I was just wondering if it was in this category, but if it's in the clerk's department, we can certainly have further conversation there for sure. Okay. Any questions from county counselors with regards to the information technology? All right. Well, we know, Jody, that's always changing all the time. That's a very fast moving area that you work in, exciting. And I think you need one new switch there just on the volume.
Anyway. Mr. Warden, I was just going to say that if, if Jody was looking for more money for to work from home better, he's done a good job this morning because I didn't hear half of what he said. But I'm sure it's all important.
Yeah, I know. And, and certainly I know it was, it was a little harder to hear, but if, if you do have further questions, certainly follow up with Jody if there's something that, that's on there for sure. Madam C E O, did you, I see you're off mute. I just don't know you're wanting to speak or not.
I'll need to confirm with you, Mr. Warden, that we will not lose track of the transition from iPads to notebooks for council.
Yeah. Okay. So there's no questions there then. Back to you, Kevin.
Yeah, and I'll turn it over to Randy now. He'll talk to, talk to the planning component of, of the 10 year capital.
Randy?
Thanks, Kevin, and good morning, council. In terms of changes made to the capital plan associated with the planning department projects for 2021, based on the previously approved 10 year capital, the one change being proposed is to increase the development charges five-year review from 50,000 to 60,000. And this is based on recent development charge review prices from municipalities, as well as based on changes to the charges act and the new community benefit charges. The majority of the D C review is funded by development charges as well as from a planning reserve. And therefore there are no increases to the proposed levy. It's still $2,000 proposed from the levy to, to support that project. The, the other notable change is that we are proposing to move the age-friendly community strategic action plan from the initial proposed start date of this year to starting the project in early 2021. This was quite a bit of consultation and given the current restrictions associated with the pandemic and staff resources as a result of the pandemic, we felt the best to pause this study to commence in early 2021. We had anticipated this project likely wouldn't start until later this year. So we're probably only delaying the start of this project by a few months. So those are the notable changes with respect to planning related projects.
Okay, Randy, any questions to the, the planning department from county council? All right, back to you, Kevin.
I'll turn it over now to Savannah Myers. She'll speak to tourism and gray roots.
Good morning. The tourism addition in here, the tourism signage, it was originally part of our operating budget. So we thought for longer term planning, it made a lot of sense to bring it into capital. And also some potential to leverage R T O seven funding through this. So that's part of why we brought it into capital instead of operating so that we could start a really good program. We, especially now, we know more than ever signage is becoming very important as we don't have as many ambassadors out on the road being able to direct. So that is why, that's a brand new to capital program, but it has always been part of our operating. For Gray Roots, the general store was originally planned for 2020, but we bumped that back to 2021. And it is our hope to keep it in 2021, given the work that's going to be happening next door with the demonstration, the opportunities that will be there to be able to really bring the store to life seemed like an excellent timing. So that is fully funded reserve for Gray Roots. Replacing drywall in the temporary exhibition hall. Ted has let us know that there are many, many layers of paint on that drywall and it is time to be replaced. But because we're not making changes this year due to COVID and our closure, we are able to bump that out by an extra year. So that has been pushed back to 2022. Replacing the heat pumps, thanks to some regular maintenance that's done in the last year. We've also been able to bump that project from next year to 2022. They will survive to that point, but they will need to be replaced, the heat pumps at Gray Roots. And that is the price for all six. For economic development strategy for tourism and culture, we're going to develop a full master plan for the full department with all three now together. So that project has been moved forward to 2022 so that we can align all three departments. And what is notable throughout our capital for all three departments is that we are asking for one third of that to go towards consultation and consultants and the other two thirds to be put directly to immediate action planning and implementation. So that has been bumped up so that we can better align across all three and find some economies of scale. In terms of rooftop units, both of those have been bumped to better align with flat roof replacing. It makes sense if we're going to be replacing the roof to replace the rooftop units at the same time. We do know that they will survive to that point also because they are in good working repair. So they've been moved back out of 2021 to two different years in 2023 and 2024. And the last notable item that we had had planned for 2022 is the building of the church. But if we're going to start building a store in 2021, that is too close. And to be able to do that, we need some time in between to make sure that we are well planning and well prepared. So we have bumped that out for two years to 2024. So those are the notable changes between tourism and Gray Roots.
Okay, thanks, Savannah. Any questions to county council?
Got a question, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
In regards to the projects at Gray Roots, given, you know, there's, there's no activity at Gray Roots currently because of the pandemic. Wouldn't it be better to try to bring some stuff forward, much like we are with the floor to try to get stuff done? And then it would be a reduction of disruption when we are open to the public again.
Savannah?
Yes, that is a great question. So we did do that with a flat roof replacement that's happening right now. And then the lobby floor that you just endorsed for us through the consent agenda, as well as starting the gallery demolition. So we are doing a gallery refresh inside in the big main gallery. So that is going to be happening while we are closed so that we're not going to cause too much disruption. The other project, we're quite confident that we'll be able to manage the site to not cause a lot of disruption and a lot will happen on the roof and elsewhere. Our carpet's also being done this year because that is exactly where our staff would be seated. So that will happen while they are out of the building. So certainly we have moved some projects up and some make more sense down the line. And we think that we'll be able to keep them separate.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question. All right. Any other questions to Savannah? All right, hearing none. Kevin?
Next, I'll ask Barb Fettie to speak to social services and childcare.
Welcome, Barb.
Good morning, county council. Through you, Mr. Warden. Social services is primarily a people service program. We're made up of Ontario Works and Children's Services. So the capital that you're seeing are, is with regard to our early on center in Hanover. We've been contributing to a reserve for, to meet accessibility needs for 2025 to be A O D A compliant. You'll see a change there. We are looking currently at whether or not the purpose-built building that we are in from the seventies is the future of early on. So early on child and family services. So what we're looking for is just to, to be sure, to continue to make sure that the building stays in good condition. You can see that we do have some projects this year. We've got some flooring. We've got some, we're still contributing to the improvements based on the, the building capital assessment, building conditioning assessment, sorry. And we are still looking at making sure that we're meeting the ceiling replacement in 2021. We did move a few things back, just given the fact that we are uncertain as to where we will be in the future. The, if you're not familiar with the site, it's located in a very residential neighborhood. As I mentioned, it was purpose-built as a childcare center. And so given the, the nature of the child and family program transition under Ministry of Education, where the early on family centers for, for adults and children, we think that there's an opportunity for us to look at a future state. And so we are taking advantage of this time closure right now when the center is close to do some of the work in 2020 that was scheduled. And then you'll see some changes for 2021. That is all I have for capital.
Okay. Any questions to Barb, county council? All righty, Kevin?
Thank you, Barb. Next, Emory Shaw, the director of housing, will speak to the housing and
Good morning, county council.
Oh, you just muted yourself.
Not sure how I did that. So the majority of our talent or the majority of our changes that are outlined in this document are from moving projects from this year to the next year and, and sort of a ripple effect after. We had a number of projects listed this year that we had to go into our tenants' units in order to do. Because of the pandemic, we are not able to do that. Also, we had a little bit of a later start in the year, of course, with a couple of months of, of not knowing whether to put tenders out or whatnot. So we had a look at our projects for next year. And ones that we felt really had to be done for next year, we've kept. And otherwise what we have done is moved a number of projects from 2020 to 2021. So with this year, the projects that we had to move, we did look at our asphalt in our parking. We had a number of parking lots that were being done. We felt that this was one that we could easily move to next year, group together, and it wouldn't be a very large undertaking, as large undertaking. We also had asphalt projects scheduled for 2021. So now they're all together. So we'll be able to tender them all at once. We had bath rebuilds and exterior, interior doors, again, moving those to 2021 due to COVID-19 this year, bathroom rebuilds, the same. Some of the projects that we did add or increase are common room furniture. The common room furniture that we have is from the seventies and eighties. A lot of it is not fire retardant. So we are moving towards furniture that will meet the fire code. We have worked with our local fire departments and worked out that over the next few years, we will be looking at removing those furnitures and, and putting in it with something that's more appropriate. Hot water tanks, just an annual, this is an annual item that we have. If we have a hot water tank that we have to replace, then we're able to do that. And we have funds available for it. We did put an increase there just because there has been an increase in the, in the price of hot water tanks. We have a retaining wall that we have added in. We've actually moved that as a new. We do have a retaining wall at one of our apartments in our Dundalk at 40 Artemisia Street. That is in need of some work. So we have moved that as a new project for next year. And also kitchen replacements at Victoria Village. That project we did when we took over Victoria Village and Golden Town, we did receive some capital funding that they, was already in existence. And so that capital funding will be put towards Victoria Village kitchen replacements and that's for 2022. Moving forward, the majority of the changes again are just sort of that ripple effect from jobs being put from 20 to 21 to 22. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from council.
Okay, thanks, Emory. Any questions from county council? I don't hear anything. Sam, Marie and Kevin?
And the next is long-term care. So I'll ask Jennifer Cornell to just highlight some of the notables.
Morning.
Good morning, council. My internet has been unstable is the message that I'm getting. So I'm not going to attempt to turn the camera on and someone interrupt if I freeze up and you can't hear me anymore. So I will go through the notable changes, home by home, Gray Gables, there is Gray Gables, there is a couple of projects that have been impacted by COVID-19 and where they're being moved forward to 2021. That's the laundry equipment and the retaining wall. The, and then a couple of projects have been moved to happen sooner, and that's surface drainage and eaves trough project, the main entrance doors. Those projects are moving forward. They need to be done sooner. They, they had, well, doors has a security impact and the surface drainage and eaves trough product, project impacts our tenant space. And if there's a lot of rain and groundwater, then there, there's can be some flooding at times. So we think that that will resolve that problem. The parking lot curves and guards project is actually being moved back to coincide with the hospital build and a potential long-term care redevelopment. And then a couple of new projects, window sill replacement and plumbing fixture replacement, they had traditionally been part of the operating budget, but the project has become big enough that we felt it was important to add it to capital and, and get ahead of it. And then alternatively, two projects are being moved back into operating, and that's the painting of common rooms and hallways and, and the recaucking projects. So that's Gray Gables. New Manor, and again, a couple of projects impacted by the, by COVID-19. So the renovation of the resident common area and staff areas on the main floor are being pushed back to 2021. A new project, a couple of new projects in the addition of blanket and towel warmers and some furniture and drapery replacements to, to bring the home up, up to speed with the competitors. And the furniture and drapes are definitely nearing the end of service. So those are new projects. And then recaucking has also been put back into operating. At Rockwood Terrace, the, the only additions are reducing the funding for a project. So blanket and towel warmers has been reduced by $8,400. And, and that's because there was a, some donations last year that allowed for a blanket and towel warmer to be purchased last year. And so one less is required as that project. And to align with the other three homes, the recaucking project is put into operating. The, the blanket and towel warmers are, are something that we tried a couple of years ago, see how it impacted the residents and how useful were they? So we piloted one per home and they are so well received by residents. So it's, it's like a little heating box that, that heats the towels and/or blankets. And if someone is chilled or not feeling well or have some responsive behaviors, it's kind of like a warm hug is how I heard one nurse describe it. And so we thought that that was important to have accessible on every home area. And that was good thinking because COVID-19, we're trying to minimize the, the traffic and the, the movement of items and people from home area to home area. So I think it's a worthwhile project to add. So those are the notable highlights for long-term care. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks Jennifer. Are there any questions from County Council?
I have a question, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
It's in regards to Gray Gables, Jennifer, the parking lot curves and guards. I note as you mentioned that you're putting it back to 2024 to coincide with the hospital build. I admire your optimism, but I wouldn't let that project slide too long because I, I'm not a big gambler, but I would hazard to guess that the hospital will not be built by 2024.
It'll be built by 2022.
Well, that's not optimism, that's delusion. So, but you, you hold on to that. You hold on to that, Mr. Warden.
I will.
I'll keep an eye on that. Thank you.
Yes, yes, we will. We definitely will. It's, it's certainly something that we are watching very closely. Thanks, Council Millen. Is there any other questions then to Jennifer? All right, Kevin?
Morning County Council. For paramedic services, notable changes in our capital. The first one is our cardiac monitor defibrillators, which are due to be purchased in 2023. They have a seven-year life span. What we want to do here is have one cardiac monitor defibrillator for each responding unit, just from staff on the road operations. Having them available in each unit helps especially a change of shift if crews on overtime to ensure each unit has a defibrillator cardiac monitor defibrillator available for them to be able to go out and respond. We particularly feel the pressure if one or the two units are down and requiring service. And this will help during that time as well if a couple are up for service. The second one is our emergency response trailer. That trailer was purchased in 2010. And just with being stored inside and the, and the good service that we receive at the trans, from the transportation folks, we pushed that out to 20-year replacement. We've had the mechanics look at it and we're comfortable that we can make it extend to 2030. The next one is a substantial change for us, but we're looking at building a new base in Durham. The current base there is, we leased it. It was built in the mid eighties. And it's one over the years, even since we started in, in the, in oh four, through the years. So we've had issues with ventilation, mold, temperature control, equipment storage, just appropriate places to, to clean our equipment. And so what we're looking at doing is, is putting money away with a potential build for 2025 on the, on the grounds of the new Rockwood Terrace. The next one, tablet computers for ambulances. We're looking at moving that project up one year. Our computers were to be replaced in 2022. And what we're finding, and this has been an ongoing concern, and it's not just here, but each year we, we try to find the best technology for the in and out because the computers come in and out of that dock each day and multiple times. They have to be taking into calls. They're out of car accidents doing sign-offs. They're taking into the base to do their, their work. That in and out has affected the impact of the, the docking station. And what happens is, is the docking station, the little pins on it can actually become bent and that blows the circuit board in the dock as well, potentially blows the keyboard. So the plan is, is what we would do is use this year's computers and lock them in those docks permanently. We have done that somewhat right now by blocking. It's a split computer and a screen and a keyboard, but this would permanently lock that in there. We would use those computers for our CAD interface, which we are pretty close to getting going across the system now. And we would purchase computers that would be stored in a cabinet that could be charged and it would be secured. And they would ultimately end up with one fixed computer and then one computer that they can take in and out and do whatever they need to do for documenting. There will be a savings because we won't have to buy the docking stations. So I don't believe there'll be really any difference in the costing if with us we're reusing the docking stations because they're, they're approximately $1,500 apiece and then whatever the installation costs are. So there actually could be some savings in that area and it would also give us better service. And the last notable change is this year, we'll be, we were including Chatsworth in the building condition assessment. So we're looking at putting money away for future repairs for that building as well. And that's the changes for paramedic services that are notable.
Okay, thanks Kevin. Are there any questions to, to this department from County Council?
I see Counselor Hicks has his hand up.
Go ahead Deputy Warden, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would just comment that I'm really, really happy to see a plan for a new paramedic base in Durham. That, that's very, very much needed. I would have liked to have seen it earlier than 2025, but nevertheless, it's good to just see it on radar.
Yeah. And with us securing that land as well, it's an opportunity for other, other projects as well maybe. So, thanks for that. Any other comments? All right. Thank you, Kevin. And back to you, Kevin.
Yeah, I'll turn it over now to Pat Hoyt to speak to the Transportation Services.
Oh, thank you Kevin, through and Mr. Warden, through you. I, I just wanted to mention a couple of things about, about our 10-year plan. The thing, the kind of the goal we really have when we set out to do it, one thing we, we kind of come up, you know, everything deteriorates at a different rate. So, you know, one job might be really kind of scheduled in 23 and there's another job close by in 24. So you'll notice, like in the map link, there's a link up to the map on page 97 of your package. This is kind of complicated because of so many handouts and sheets and we don't have the maps that you'd normally have. But you'll notice that a lot of times, something will shift one year. So, you know, rather than go back to the same basic proximity, two years in a row, we'll put two jobs together and try to get economies of scale that way. So you'll notice we kind of do that around Katy. There's a bunch of jobs in 2025, kind of in Blue Mountains, over near Gray Highlands, Gray Road 40 and Gray Road 2, we've kind of put them together. Jobs in Georgian Bluffs, we've kind of put together because you're already there. So you'll see a lot of that in our, in our package. And one more thing I wanted to mention, a couple of years ago, we started always doing two lifts of asphalt. It's made a big difference in how, how our roads are looking after a couple of years with the truck traffic. They really need that extra structure. So, and this year we've kind of looked into adding a lot of micro surfacing. So for example, Gray Road 40, we paved it last year. We're going back in 2029 to do some micro surfacing just to seal that top and, and stop the initial cracking. So, and one other thing you'll notice in here is a lot of overlays. We still have a lot of those old roads from when we were only doing one lift. When we're in the area, we're trying to maybe put another lift on of asphalt to get that pavement structure we need. So I'm going to start on page 91 here, just go through some of these projects and some of the changes that have come about. One to notice, kind of the second one down is that structure in West Gray that we had put off this year because of COVID and timing and all that type of thing. It actually kind of works out for us because there's another bridge raid in the area. So we'll probably end up tendering those together. Probably be good for a contractor because he could be working, one could be curing while he's working on the other. And it kind of works out really well for us actually. So those jobs will be coming out next year. The Orchardville Bridge, we've moved off a year. The design is pretty much done, but it's just too tight this year. There's some hydro work to do and we just, we're too close to the window this year. So we're going to do it next year. The next bunch of jobs is all jobs around Katy, north and south of Katy or north, north and west of Katy, I guess. Same thing, just jobs in the area. They all need to be done. They were kind of within a year of each other and we've kind of tried to lump them together just to take advantage of the economies of scale. So I'm on to page 92. The second last one there is, is, is the big 19 and 21 job. So I will be coming forward with a report in two more council sessions about this, but the plan right now is the, it's with the utilities. They're, they're making their designs. We're hoping to move the utilities in 2021 and then construction in 2022 and 23. So it's a huge job. And we also have to get some things straightened out with a pumping station that it's a town of Blue Mountains pumping station, but we have to move it because of the roundabout. There's no agreement on who's paying for it yet. So we're going to work with the town on that. The bottom of page 92, you see that 170, that was one of the roads we paved with one lift. We're in the area at 17. So we put that extra lift in there, that million dollars to put the top lift of that. Onto page 93. One thing worth noticing about the fifth one down, Gray Road 13 in Clarksburg, we coordinated that with our depot. We're paving our depot that year. It's, it's a smaller job, but we thought, let's try to do them both together. The one below that, Gray Road 17B, it was originally one project. We divided it into two. The piece through Nichols Gully has some design challenges and some property that we're probably going to have to get. So we really wanted to do the east-west section first. So we're going to do that sooner and then in 2021. And then the next section will come back in Nichols Gully and do 2022. The, the, I guess, third one up from the bottom, the structure, the fiber wrap, we took a report for that about a month ago, maybe two months now. But that's just, we're waiting to study to see what year that's going to go. We're probably going to, we're going to do it sometime. We just don't know when. So it's kind of a placeholder for now. On to page 94, at the very top, there's our Gray Road three and four funded roundabout, which we're very excited about. The RFP is ready to go. We're going to put it out any day now and get a consultant on board for that. So we actually, kudos to the, the people administering the grant. They actually gave us time to get it together. We've been saying that for every grant for a long time and it's really nice to have a long window to work with the process and everything. So we're really happy with that. You'll see the fifth one down. We've got $5 million for the four-laning of Gray Road 19. We put a traffic study last year because it's been in our DCs for a long time, but we never really had a study saying, yes, you definitely need to do the four-laning. So it has been confirmed and the Blue Mountains residents, of course, could tell us it's very busy. So as of, in a couple of weeks, or you know, in four weeks with this next report I come with, there's a lot of little moving parts in 19 and 21 that we're working on, trying to get everything coordinated as best we can. Onto page, I guess there is page 95. We should have said this page is intentionally blank, but anyway, onto page 96. So I'm going to go on to the depots and domes. Very first, we have Dundalk Dome still needs some repairs. Oh, actually, does anyone have any questions about the construction and capital first?
Any questions from County Council? Counselor, Deputy Warden, Counselor Hicks?
Sorry, just can you explain what is the fiber wrap on page 93? What is that?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, there's a, some cracking on, on that structure that is just a little bit concerning, that it hasn't been totally analyzed what exactly it is or how severe it is, I should say. So there's visual of cracking there that we can see. It's basically just a fiberglass wrap. And it, it really, it shockingly really increases the strength of a bridge that needs it pretty significantly. So we, you kind of get to that point where you know what you have isn't quite going to be what you need. But the next step to go to a full replacement is way more than what the bridge wrap is going to get us. So that's, that's why we've gone with that option. But we're studying it right now to see what year we need.
Okay, thanks Pat. Are there any other questions up till now from County Council?
Warden, I see Ms. Counselor Millen and Counselor Potter.
Okay, go ahead Counselor Millen and then Counselor Potter after that. Go ahead.
First of all, I, I thought page 95 was all the projects that we'd be doing in own sound this year, but I'm glad you clarified that. The question I had was in regards to the wrap as well. I recall a number of years ago, it was proposed to put some kind of hybrid fix onto a road on a trail in Chatsworth. And we were soundly victimized for even proposing that. And we went ahead with a full bridge replacement and fixture. I'm wondering, are you confident that this wrap technique will serve the bridge into the future?
Yeah, we are. It's, it's used by a lot of, a lot of agencies and everyone's had quite good success with it. There's some on the, on the Gardner, probably not the best example, if you see the Gardner, but the areas that wrap look fine. But anyway, yeah, we're very confident it's going to work out. And we're, you know, we're ways from tenuring it obviously. But yeah, we're pretty comfortable on the technology.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Potter, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, Pat. Is COVID having much of an effect on the prices of materials and, and so on? As you look ahead, and, and I don't know if your crystal ball is any newer than mine, but I just wondered if, if you have any idea what the impacts are going to be in the short term? And, and then as we look out through the years of this forecast?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, we, all we can kind of say is this year, we know we got really good prices, right? Oil's low, the asphalt's really reasonable this year. We've noticed. The AC index hasn't come out yet. We don't really know exactly the price asphalt until we already pave. So a month after you pave, but you would think there's expenses for our contractors. We've noticed they all have COVID plans in place. There's all more spacing. You know, you might need a few more guys. You're not having three guys necessarily in the same truck all the time. You would think ongoing, there'd be an expense. I don't know if that's overpowered by the fact that they really need the work this year. So this year, it seems like we got really good prices. But if you really have to change, it's hard to do work when you're all six feet apart, right? So I could see, I could see there being increasing price in the future, but it's hard for me to tell. They know better than me, I guess.
Be sure to your volume there at the end there, Pat, was a little in and out there. So I'm not.
Oh, was it? Okay. I'll have to tell IT.
Yeah. Something to do with those switches again. Any other questions then from, oh, go ahead Counselor Mackey. I see you. Go ahead.
Thanks Warden. And through you to Pat. Pat, just wondering if the transportation master plan, is it dead in the water? Or can council expect the resurrection of it? And how does it plan into your? And how does it, uh, plan into your long-term forecast?
Uh, no, it is not dead. That is, uh, actually I have a meeting with, uh, Kim coming up. I'm sure that is the first thing she will mention. The connecting link and the exchanges are still alive and we're kind of working on them and we got to get them moving ASAP. Uh, it doesn't really come into our planning right now. Um, we're kind of going with the network we got, but it will as soon as those reports go forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, uh, up until this point with regards to construction of roads? And I know Pat, sometimes that, that varies every year depending on circumstances and certain roads that all of a sudden need higher priority, right?
Yes, that's, that's right.
Okay, carry on then.
Okay, I'll go over the facilities and, uh, depots. So, you know, most of the stuff is the same, a couple of changes. There's some, uh. Dome repairs in Dundalk that we'll need to do. That being said, we don't plan on being there for the long haul. Um, just to let you know, the patruldee, we still have not acquired the land around Flushton somewhere for the new, uh, the new site. It's been a little more difficult than we were anticipating. It's, uh, we're still, we're still on the search for that. So. I've got to get some information to Southgate about that dome to see what we're going to end up doing with it. If the town's interested in it or that's kind of on, uh, on my list of things to do. To figure out what we're going to do. We don't want to pour a bunch of money into something we're not going to have, but, um. They are pretty necessary repairs for twenty twenty one that we're planning on doing.
We don't want your rotten secondhand, uh, goods, that's for sure.
Like, go ahead, Counselor Millen, you're speaking there. Go ahead.
I heard that. I heard that. I, I. There's nothing wrong with that mic.
Mr. Warden, he sounds like a crabby old man now.
Okay, carry on, Pat. Carry on.
Okay, uh, onto machinery now. So there's a couple of new things in here. One is the purchase of, uh, two new half-ton trucks, basically for the mechanics. Over the years, um, we kind of got away from having a truck specifically for the mechanics and we find ourselves in a situation now where. They're always kind of trying to grab a spare one around if they have to run out, you know, someone's truck breaks down or there's problems with the grader or whatever. And sometimes there's no truck there. The area foreman might not be working that day or whatever. So, uh, we really want to add to, uh, um. Half tons to our fleet. Um, Calvin has gone through and kind of figured out what our charger rates are going to be to keep that equipment reserve. Where it needs to be. So that, that's one big difference is, uh, two new half tons that we're going to get, having.
Pat, just on, uh, would you, would you just go as a regular, uh, half ton or would you sort of go a little bit more so we could carry some tools and stuff? So then these, when they get there, they have something to work with versus just a half ton or you feel that's adequate?
Yeah, we're going, it'll be a regular half ton, but we'll, we'll definitely get something, uh, on the back box of some sort. So they can have their tools in there. It would be nice for that. You wouldn't want to have to load your tools in and out every time you got to go somewhere, right?
No, no, I, and I'm just thinking for weights and stuff like that, uh, if a half ton is adequate versus a three quarter ton or for pulling and. Or, or do you need, you know, so, okay, carry on.
The second item on there is to purchase a tandem truck. So that, that is, uh, all dealing with the, uh. Contract with Harold Sutherland, of course, who's been, uh, bought out, uh, by Walker. So their two routes are up in April twenty two. We have our tender with them that, uh, they do those two routes in Georgia Bluffs. So. We put this in here, uh, we have a report that has to come forward yet. We're kind of working on the, uh, um, the cost benefit of all the type of things, but. We got a really, really good price from Harold Sutherland at the time. I think it was, you know, maybe a little more than half of what, uh, the Miller bid was. So. Uh, we're, we're worried that if we tend to that again, we might not get that same prices as, uh, you know, whether or not Sutherland has, you know, is the same people bidding as a Walker, uh, Walker company now. So we don't know. But, uh, we've put it in here as, uh, probably proposed to bring those back into our program to have them operated by Gray County. Nice consistency of service and that. I'm not going to go too far into it because Steve, uh, Dahl Meyer, our new maintenance manager will have a report coming on, on that. But right now we thought we should put it in there in case we end up taking those two roots back. Uh, the next one down is the great all. We had it in there, um, four hundred and, uh, yeah, four hundred thousand. Uh, the great alls have really gone up a lot. Um, so we've got a more accurate figure. One other thing we did, and I, I'm not sure if I mentioned this to committee before, we were looking into maybe a rubber tire excavator. Because we had, you know, our, our, our fleet committee kind of said, well, we could probably use an excavator and maybe that would be better than the great all and. We've kind of been studying that for basically a year. And, uh, what we've kind of come up with was that the great all is a licensed piece of equipment. It's. And I know the, the, uh, member municipalities all have, uh, a lot of them have rubber tire excavators and they really like them. Uh, but for us, I think with our, uh, our, our geography and how large the county is, it just doesn't get around that well. Whereas our great all is a licensed, uh, piece of equipment that can basically drive at highway speed. But we also looked that we're not really using the attachments that are available for it. So we, we want to stick with the great all and this will be our new one that we would purchase, but. We will also want to get a lot more attachments for attachments for brushing and attachments, uh, you know, for your, uh, doing behind guide rail and some of the things that a great all really doesn't do now. Uh, we think with the attachments, it would be a, even a better piece of equipment, but generally, uh, the great all works well for us. So we've got a more accurate figure of what we're going to spend. And the last one is just, oh, sorry.
Do you have thought, uh, any issues with people learning how to drive a great all? Like, I know it's sort of a unique piece of equipment, but do you have that? Is that, is that ever an issue with people learning how to drive it?
Yeah, uh, through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, uh, we're really seeing it this year actually because we had, uh. Uh, a forty-year employee has been operating our great all for years and years and years and just an absolute expert at it. He, uh, he's been off, uh. Lately with some medical issues, but, um, we have two new guys doing it this year. Um, so they're kind of doing half days. And, uh, actually it's kind of a good system because, um, whoever's in the great all, the other, the other worker is doing the grades of the ditches. So, you know, you're either operating the machine or you're watching the machine operate and trying to figure out what you want it to do. So. They've come a long way this year, I think, and, uh, and they are getting in the hang of it for sure. Uh, the last thing is that Ontario Works Passenger Van, that'll be, um, you know, some of those programs are, um. We're just, uh. We had moved it back because it was, we weren't sure if it was going to be funded or not. I, um, they can talk more about that than me, but, um, that's just a change that we made.
Okay, well, thanks, Pat. I see that's the end of your list, right?
Yeah.
Is there any questions from county councillors? Okay, I'm going to take this back to you, Kevin. Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, Warden. Yeah, um, I, I know that notable items pages, pages are a lot longer than normal. A lot of that is to relationship to COVID nineteen. So. Apologize for that. Um. We, we try to do these notable items in the first three years, just as, you know, as a courtesy and trying to keep. The public informed that if you're out, um, you know, just telling a, a rate pair that a project's going to happen in a certain year and then, and then it gets changed. We want to try, especially in the next three years, we want to try to bring that to your attention. So that's, that's why we have done it this way. Um. I know previous years that we ran into instances of that where. A rate pair thought a road is going to get repaired next year and it wasn't and the council wasn't aware that it had been changed. So this is our attempt to try to keep everybody informed about those notable changes. Okay? Uh, so, um, staff is recommending this forecast be received and, uh, and the first year be used for the, the twenty twenty one annual budget and. If there's, uh, any items that need to, to come forward in advance, that staff would be authorized to procure that, but they're going to have to come back to council. Uh, with a report requesting to go to tender for that and, uh, and, and get resolution to approve that. So. So it is a, it is a, just a planning document. It's, uh, it's not an approved budget anymore. It's just a planning for staff and to, to try to. To inform everyone what, what our future plans are here. So.
Thanks, Kevin. That's great to have that and I know it's a living document and as, as time changes, things sometimes change too, but, uh. It's the best you can do and that's great. Any questions from county councillors again on the whole report? Again, that was moved by Counselor Burley and. Go ahead.
Just in, uh, it's just a general question, Kevin, uh, regarding, uh, the increase, uh, for, uh, for twenty twenty one and in fact. The next two or three years. For instance, next year's increase is one point four three. And I'm not, you maybe touched on it, but is inflation factored into that number? I, I note that, you know, the year-over-year January increase of this year was, or yeah, this year the CPI was. Almost twice that. And I'm just wondering whether those percentage increases is enough to keep up realistically, given the rate of inflation.
Kevin?
That's a good question. No, we, we have like, um, for example, in our facilities or building condition assessments, we build in a two percent inflation on those items there. For our reserves and stuff. Um, and then we update those every year based on what our outcomes of our tenders and, and, and that have been. So. We are up for our, um, five years are up for our BCA's. So those, that tender, that RFP is just going out shortly. And, uh, so we'll update all these costings. We'll use all those again, go forward, but, uh. We're trying to use the best, either what we've got for tenders or what we have in those BCA's and, and trying to protect here as best we can. Yes.
Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it.
And we do, we run up to that when we get to the budget every year as well. For the overall. Okay, so this is moved by Counselor Burley, second by Counselor Mackey. Any further discussion? Anybody opposed? Okay, that is carried. I'm suggesting, Madam Kirk, maybe we take a little break. So I got, uh, my phone eleven thirty-five. Can we be back at eleven forty-five? I don't click. Does that work? Ten minutes?
Yep, I see net heads nodding, so I think that's appropriate.
All right, so we'll take a quick break and we'll come back at eleven forty-five. Thank you. Make sure you put everybody on mic or mute there, please. Okay, so let's just move by Council Burley, second by Council Mackey. Any further discussion? Anybody opposed?
Couple, oh, that's there. A couple more minutes.
Okay. It was like Mr. Bodies outside or was outside. Okay, thank you, and welcome back, everyone. And so carrying on our agenda, our next report is a financial update and year-end projections as of April 30th. And Kevin's bringing this forward and it's moved by Council Kivany and Council Millen. So Kevin, you can take over there.
Thank you. This report provides staff's first projection to year end based on revenues and interest April 30th. The report summarizes any variances that are being projected for the various departmental operations and reflects the potential financial impacts of COVID-19 pandemic. And included with the written report is a high-level variance analysis and then a set of the county's financial statements by departmental. So if I would like to just go through some highlights of each of the departments and walk through if that's, if that's okay, Warden.
Sure. So why don't we just go right through and then if there's a, all of a sudden if somebody wishes to raise a question, they can either do that or wait to the end. Okay?
Okay, thanks. So under administration, we're looking at a positive variance of about $252,000. This is being a current due to staffing vacancies, staffing changes, reduction in staffing, like not hiring students. We reduce our training and travel lines, and that's what's helping with the $252,000 surplus. Our investment income is projected to be about $200,000 lower than what we had budgeted. This is a result in the Bank of Canada's reduction in interest rates that occurred in March where the rates dropped one and a half percent. So it's difficulty getting any, any any returns at all really on investments right now. So we, our investment policy does, the way it was structured was that any net revenue budgeted greater than 1% of our levy would be placed in reserve for one-time non-recurring expenditures and therefore with that amount, the interest, the revenue dropping that amount to reserves will, will correspond to that and therefore won't have a budget impact on us, but act of future reserves and amount of money for one-time capital items or something that may come forward. Council, the council budget is anticipated in the year with a surplus of about $58,000 with savings and salaries and benefits, travel, meal and accommodations as a result of COVID-19, required virtual meetings and fewer committee, committee, committee meetings occurring. Information Services, this budget is in, and this really is a budget that operates our accounting and technology network. This budget is just paid the end year with a surplus of about $24,000 savings in computer software expenditures, desktop computer. Reduced staff training and development costs being the main contributors to that surplus. Weekly indemnity and our workers' compensation, her weekly indemnity costs are anticipated the end of the year with a shortfall, but $66,000. The number and then the length of those weekly indemnity claims remain, if they remain at that current level, that's the, what we project that deficit will be. Our workers' compensation budget is projecting a year-end deficit of about $192,000. Biggest cost driver here are the claims where the employees have been unable to return to work for a significant period of time. COVID-19 is also impacting this as employees' ability to receive treatment from physiotherapists, chiropractors, et cetera, has been difficult during COVID. If our year-end projections are right, and the deficit is realized for these two programs that we do have set up reserve funds for weekly indemnity and for our workers' compensation that could be called upon. And just for council's information, the WSAB reserve at the end of 2019 had a balance just over $3 million. Our assessment budget, that's the amount that's paid to impact, that's projected to end the year on budget. Provincial offenses, we're projecting a deficit of $33,000 after cost sharing with Bruce County. Gross revenues are about $245,000 lower than budgeted at the end of April, with our share of that being 144,000. Volumes and revenues are difficult to predict based on the first four months of the year. The decrease in the tickets that were written during this pandemic and the uncertainty of when the court is going to reopen and when tickets will actually get paid is making it difficult to project this budget. The decline in revenue has been offset in reduced expenditures. We've had staff redeployed. The court is not operating and we've had other savings as well. It's difficult to, to project on this one, just with the uncertainty of the ticket volume. So. So if our revenue estimates are not what we think, then this deficit could be large and then we're projecting. We are starting to seem to see more payments coming, so that's a positive sign and just personally seeing more police and, and things happening on the roads lately. And here's, and there's, we're starting, you know, that mode of writing more tickets and stuff, so. Health unit and other funding initiatives are projected the year on budget. The health units expenditures related to COVID-19 have been projected to be about $250,000 for 2020. The provincial government has announced that the expenditures related to COVID-19, these emergency expenses will be funded by the province if they exceed the health unit's 2020 total budget. So we should be on target there. Property is projecting a year with surplus of about $5,000 through just savings and salaries and benefits. We didn't fill the student position and while some of those savings have been offset with higher cleaning costs here at the administration building for COVID-19. Taxation supplementary taxation write-offs. I have not prepared a year-end position on that yet. It's too early in the year. I'll, I'll reach out later to the local municipalities and to see if I can get a projection on what that's going to look like for 2020. Planning, they anticipate the end year with a surplus of about $24,000 again at savings and staff being redeployed. They've also had staff on leave as a result of the pandemic. Their application revenue received today is close to your today budgets and staff anticipate that other applications will be coming. And prior to year ends, they figure that their revenue projections are on budget. Agriculture is projected to end the year on budget. Foresting and forestry trails are currently on track and should be on budget. And trails is budget is anticipated the end of year on budget. Economic development and tourism, they're anticipating the end of year on budget as a result of the pandemic. Economic development tour budgets are being combined to best serve our stakeholders through a refocus of projects and initiatives, support the economic recovery. The Sidneyham campus as part of the economic development budget portfolio is going, and the year with a, is projected the end of the year with a $76,000 deficit, the number of fixed costs we have there and the inability to rent that facility with it being closed is, is impacting that. But the deficit is being absorbed in the economic development and tourism operating budgets. And so overall, the, the portfolio remains on budget and that's how they're working towards that. Gray Roots were anticipating in the year with a surplus of about $155,000. Revenues are down considerably with the closure and then, and the anticipated reopening as a result of COVID. But the savings due to redeployment, the decision to forego all the hiring of the students and the postponement of the traveling exhibit have helped reduce costs and are contributing to that surplus. And their gray roots projecting a capital shortfall, but $10,000 on the capital side with unexpected additional roof repairs and the change order required. So, but staff will continue to look for capital savings to offset that shortfall as, as other projects move forward. Ontario Works is projected to end the year with a surplus of about $160,000. Manning with that is on the Ontario Works administration and employment support budgets. Where they've got about $146,000 in gross salary savings with staff vacancies and fewer part-time van driver hours. They've had a number of retirees that are others that have resigned in the department and those aren't being replaced this year due to the pandemic. Childcare projected to the end of your own budget. Ministry stated that the funding reconciliation for the closure and the reopening periods and any subsequent funding adjustments will not place undue hardship on municipal budgets. Staffing vacancies, staffing changes that have occurred, reduction in staff training, conferences, travel and lower anticipated heating repairs are providing $170,000 in operating budget surplus there. Long-term care, this portfolio is anticipated in the year with a deficit of about $1,372,000. Over the past two months, the, the COVID-19 pandemic has had a significant impact on the finances and the operations of the County of Grace Long-Term Care Department. The financial impacts of COVID are difficult to predict at this time, given the uncertainty of provincial funding regarding extraordinary expenditures and the unknown duration of this pandemic and the safeguards that will have, how long those will have to remain in place. Expenditures related to COVID-19 and then put into place, it was all the provincial directives that have been received either from the Ministry of Long-Term Care, the Ministry of Health, Medical Officer of Health. This includes increased spending related to additional staff, personal protective equipment, supplies, equipment to support infection protection and control measures and screening and testing initiatives. Long-term care, term care staff are continuing to work closely with finance and human resources and purchasing to ensure responsible emergency response spending. And the coming months staff will consider actions that can be taken to help mitigate costs and, and, and reduce future deficits. Reduce the projected future deficit. Transportation services, protect, projected year-end operating deficit of about $105,000 and about $817,000 in capital surplus. Capital surplus is based on the capital of projects planned to be tenured in 2020 and based on the awards to date. And they're projecting a surplus of the $817,000. Staff is proposing to help fund corporate deficits related to COVID-19, providing these surplus funds and using unbudgeted federal gas tax funds to help fund capital projects in 2020. What I mean by that is that we have projects there that we've got capital for that are funded from taxation and from, and, and or, and/or federal gas tax. We have submitted additional projects to, under the federal gas tax portal with AMO, looking to use additional gas tax that we have in reserve as a, as a means if, if these deficits are realized by year end and there's no additional provincial or upper levels of government of funding that we have them listed with AMO and in that stream, because you're, before you start any work on these projects, these projects are supposed to be listed on the AMO's portal before any expenditures take place. So if staff have done that as a placeholder, that, and then as the council approves of that use that we need to use those revenue reserve funds to, to support these prizes and create surplus taxation for our COVID-19 related over expenditures that that can occur. So. So for this report presentation, the transportation services capital budget is projecting the, the year-end surplus, I said, about $818,000. And that's based on the tender projects to date and that's the taxation surplus and, and that surplus is helping offset the COVID-19 deficit that are being projected in other departments. Paramedic services, services projected in the year with a worst-case scenario of a $985,000 operating budget shortfall and a balanced capital budget. We are still waiting on our annual ministry funding announcement. We had included in the 2020 budget $67,000. And as of this day, we still have no confirmation of what our funding increase will be. We have start, we did, as with all of our operations, we started tracking COVID costs back in, in March and as of end of April, that these costs totaled just over $214,000 for paramedic services. The ministry has requested finance staff to do cost estimates on the impacts of COVID-19 for paramedic services. We have submitted those to them. So we're hopeful that those inquiries are that additional provincial funding will be coming, be forthcoming for paramedic services. But at, at this time, we have no announcement of any of our annual funding nor any additional funding related to COVID. So based on this, we are projecting a $985,000 shortfall for paramedic services. So overall, with the, we're projecting here just almost $1.1 million deficit corporately and that is utilizing the taxation surplus from capital, the transportation sur, and transportation's capital surplus along with all the other surpluses that have been identified from other departments in order to try to assist with these COVID-related deficits. So if, like I said, if council's approval is provided, we can use additional federal gas tax funds in 2020 in order to offset this deficit. And if, if these, if the deficit numbers get worse, for example, it could get worse if we had a pandemic or if we had an outbreak in one of our homes, which caused a lot more staffing and, and additional cleaning, et cetera, that projections could even be higher. So we're, we're assuming that we're going to stay outbreak-free at this point. But it is an opportunity or an avenue that we can fund these deficits if no provincial funding from, or, or federal funding comes our way. So. That is my summary of my report and highlights, and I'll try to answer questions or I'll turn to those that have helped put this together or the other directors. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Kevin. And as you said, this is as of April 30th. And so are there questions out there from county councillors with regards to this report?
I have a question. Council Millen?
Go ahead, Council Millen. Thank you, Madam Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I suppose this question might better be directed to CEO Windgrove. Tim, in relation to Kevin's remarks about, at this point at least, there's no indication of any further funding coming from provincial or federal coffers. As administrator, are you aware, I know there's lobbying going on, but just what sort of is the flavor of that, that lobbying? Are, are there any prospects of getting any funding or is it not likely to happen? Because I'm pretty confident that this deficit is going to be real, if not bigger.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. As noted in the recommendation with this report, you know, the Gray County support the efforts of both FCM and AMO requesting further financial support. So both of those organizations, I think, are working hard on all of our behalf to try and get the message out to the province that, you know, we can't do this alone and we can't do it on the back of a property tax base at all. So we support it through our consent agenda, some correspondence earlier today. I think there's an opportunity for us potentially to look at, you know, lending our shoulder with it, with another letter or something like that. But at this point, that advocacy continues and I think we can only just get behind it.
And as we probably heard yesterday, that our credit rating for the federal government has been reduced from AAA to AA+ or something like that. So we know that there are deficits, not only at this level, but certainly at the federal and provincial levels as well. So hopefully, things move forward into the, into a more safer, safer environment. Any further questions then, or any follow-up that Council Millen, if you wish? Any other questions out there?
If I may, if I may, just, I find it interesting that we're being If I may, if I may, just I find it interesting that we're being surveyed for our costs, for example, through paramedic services. So that hopefully reassures me that they're they're looking at something for paramedic services at least. It has become quiet on the long-term cares front. They did come out and give us funding April and May, but really haven't heard anything since then. So but that's all I know at this point in time.
Well, and I think from a comment I'll make as a warden is for our long-term care facilities, we don't want to spare any expense to keep our our vulnerable safe. So I think, I know as moving forward, Kevin, I think we we want to stay on track of what we're doing and and move forward with what we have to do at the end of the year for sure. Any further comments or questions with regards to this report? So this is, this has been put on the floor. Anybody opposed? There is none. That is Carrie. Thank you. So now moving on to our resilience and recovery plan, and this is Savannah, and this has been moved by Counselor Patterson and Counselor Woodbury. So Savannah, would you wish to bring forth? Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Warden. And I do have Steve Furness with me, three offices that way. And he's going to be on to talk about the recovery plan as well, because he's been spearheading this project for us. Two meetings ago, we had asked for your permission to go back and work with our finance department to look at our budgets and and look at projects that we were not going to be moving forward and to take that budget and refocus it to recovery planning and recovery implementation for our municipalities and our businesses. So we did go back to our working group and we spent two meetings now with them kind of going line by line through this to find out what is it that they really truly need at municipal level and from our businesses so that we're complementing those local actions that you're already doing on the ground and to be able to fill the gaps where maybe at the local level you're unable to do that. As a county, we can provide some consistency for our businesses. So that work has been ongoing. We do know through conversations with our business community, from what we're hearing from our working group, that many businesses, because of the federal and provincial programs, have been able to find that liquidity. But what they're really struggling with now is how they return back to profit. And that we know is absolutely key. We do believe through those conversations that what our businesses really need are the facts so that they know what they need to do and they have the right information from one source. They have the confidence to be able to reopen their doors, that they know they're taking good care of their employees, that they're taking good care of their community, and that the community is going to feel confident walking back through their doors and also support towards moving back to profit. So a less than a year ago, we were talking to you about really trying to change that narrative, saying that, you know, we need more people. And now today, we're talking about saving jobs and saving businesses. So it's been a fundamental shift over the last year. And where we were a year ago too, we were just barely at a 2% unemployment rate, and now we are 9.3% unemployment rate. So things have changed a great deal, which made a lot of the projects that we had planned for 2020 irrelevant. And now a great need from our business community to step up and help them take some action. So through the the working group, we have developed a plan that we have before you today. It is a very high-level plan and it keeps changing. Right up until the report was ready to be published, it has changed numerous times because things are moving so quickly. And we want to make sure that we are flexible and we're adaptable to be able to be proactive for our community. What is underlying the entire plan, though, is the need to enable our local entrepreneurs through those facts, that confidence and the support. The fundamentals of this plan really mean that we're turning our focus inwards to focus on our entrepreneurs and our residents. We're not looking outward. We're not looking to attract at this point. We are really focusing in to make sure that our businesses have the support that they need. And the goal ultimately is to be able to move towards sustainable economic development once again for our for our entire. So in the plan, I'll share my screen if that works. Oh, whoops. I haven't done this on Zoom yet. We'll see. Share. Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Excellent. So through the plan, there are 27 action items in here, not including the additional data tracking that we think is really important to be able to provide that baseline and moving forward. And Steve's going to talk about the plan specifically, but I do want to mention a couple of the items that have been done to date. Because I really, I want to call attention to just how amazing our working group has been, which means all of your staff and all of our economic development and tourism staff working together to do this united. It's very, very important and just you, you have amazing people. So I want you to know that. We did run the two all-sector business surveys, which you've seen the results of in April and May. Our Business Resource Page, I think, is on its third or fourth look, but still updated almost daily. A business toolkit resource we have put together, and that actually came a recommendation from Tannable Mountains and from City of Owen Sound, asking for some help and consistency for their businesses, especially downtown, to be able to provide information that is necessary from public health, to be able to update their business hours as they go and be able to promote the alternative methods that they are still using for delivery, whether it be curbside or online. So we did pull that project together and all nine of our municipalities have the exact same signs. They're all co-branded for the county and for your municipality, and they're in downtown businesses and operators. Our community and business resiliency map continues to grow. It now includes patios and includes PPE. As things change, it's a really good tool and platform to be able to amend as we need it. Providing access to PPE locally, we have that tracked, which is included on the resiliency map. And something that we definitely want to make note of is a small business transition program, and that is what was known as Starter Company Plus, run through our Business Enterprise Centre. It's a provincially funded program that is Starter Company Plus. You might remember last year, right around this time, actually, we did a presentation where we had about 20 business owners who came forward to be able to accept their grants and their training. And what we do know now from the province is that they have allowed us to transition that program to be very COVID-specific. So we were able to lessen the grants a little bit, tighten the program up, but still provide training that is necessary in this time. So it's completely different than what it was, but we do have approval and it did launch yesterday and is rolling out beginning July 1st for applications. The Ask a Professional series was phenomenal. The last one that was run was with Dr. Era and providing the information directly to businesses, making sure that they know what they need for PPE and public health requirements. And then last night was our Grey Bruce business or graduate celebration, which was just an awesome example of regional retention. And we're very excited to see what the museums will be able to do with that to create that permanent collection so that we can have our youth come back and remember the time of 2020 and their their graduation. So just before Steve discusses what what is in the plan and what those high-level themes are, we did want to note that even though all of these actions are completely new because of COVID-19, the basis of what they are no different than what we would normally do in economic development and tourism. It is all about providing industry and consumer support. It's just that the message and the focus is completely new. So that is what is different. But we did want to reinforce that we do budget to work with our stakeholders annually and to market and to support our businesses. So this still continues. It's just in a brand-new light. And as been mentioned in in the report just previous, we did work with finance to make sure that the deficit that we were going to expect from Sydney because we cannot rent out the facility would be included within our overall, and we would be able to account for it before we looked to refocus these budget dollars. So our our departments combined will look to to end the year on budget based on even this refocus, but keeping that deficit at bay. So that was really important to be able to come back to you today and say, we can do this with these funds, and we do expect to end the year on budget. So I'm going to hand it over to Steve then, and you tell me when I need to flip pages, Steve, and I will flip.
Yeah, as well, let's keep flipping because I sense to move on. So we have, I think, want to, if you go to outcomes, I think, you know, you can all read this report at some point, and we has a lot of detail existing. But I think the outcomes are what we really want to communicate, and all our actions are sort of guided by that. And we we do move on a dime at some point. There was, for example, certain businesses were allowed to open the Friday, and as of Thursday night, the regulations still hadn't been issued. So it's a matter of monitoring that very quickly and and helping them get the word out. But outcomes, we want businesses to feel confident in their reopening, and that involves their employees and their customers and themselves. And so we've heard that from a number of businesses without their employees, they don't have a business. So it's it's very important that that combination happen, that they take advantage of e-commerce, that they have mentorship and advice, that they understand what government programs are there. In the beginning, that was pretty challenging. There were so many programs and they were shifting. We basically had to watch the Prime Minister to understand what the programs were, how they were shifting. But most importantly, we want business owners to have up to be optimistic about the local economy. And it's and it's more than just that. It's the community as well. So with those outcomes in mind, that's all our the actions that we want to kind of work towards. Savannah talked a lot about what's ongoing. You know, in terms of the community, the facts, this was a lot of our focus early on. You know, what are the government financial programs? What's open? What are the protocols? So as our businesses open, the resiliency map will become not not as high a priority, but it's it's still there. So we're working through making sure the facts are there. About you can flip build confidence, you know, we've talked about the the reopening toolkit. We're going out with videos shortly. We've identified with your local EDOs and COs what what businesses would be a good example to highlight. And there's success stories and how people have shifted their businesses. And it truly is remarkable how some businesses have shifted, not just their business and where people flow, but what products they're selling and and how they're selling it. The other thing will be a destination toolkit. It's more of a resource listing. Many of our downtowns are are moving in this direction quickly. So we wanted to pull together best practices on downtown patios, street closures. The next page said. So supporting small business, and really, this is where you know, the support and focus has to be, Savannah talked about Starter Company. But you know, just to remind everyone that we do have a community improvement plans, and there will be some businesses who want to do use those programs. I just remind you, if you don't have a community improvement plan, we can help you get one in place very, very quickly. We have some great templates, particularly at Gray Highlands, they've done one recently. Use that as a template. I would say the other shop here program, provincial, the province has come forward with for going online. We can continue to see and support that that effort. Also supported by the Starter Company Plus Program, a grant program that we've talked about, which is a third third bullet there. I think the other one that is worth mentioning is the bottom sounding board, mentorship with the Catapult. The Catapult is our non-for-profit group that's supporting existing businesses accelerate. They work very closely with our Enterprise Centre, and we're hoping to have some dollars there to to help give local membership mentorship to to businesses that maybe just really need to reinvent themselves. Next slide, marketing and communication. So this is where later on, or starting now, we're going to start to to push our buy local campaign. And one of our messages will be to really highlight all the trails and natural attractions, but then to link that to outdoor patios. And we really want to make that link and highlight. I hadn't quite done the numbers, but if every resident of of Gray County went on the trail, they would have something like 100 meters of trail. So lots of space to to find distancing space. So between the buy local and the trail promotion and the and the patio promotion, we really want to support our downtowns and and that restaurant sector. And then, of course, there'll be more marketing with RTO7s and tourism, once the tourism sector fully opens up. The last two sections, you know, what can municipal councils do? Differing tax penalties and things, I think you've already been working on that. And of course, tracking and measuring the economy so that we can understand how how fast or we're coming out of this or to what degree we're coming out of it. So I won't didn't go through every item, but I would open for for questions or suggestions or observations.
Okay, Steve, thank you. County Council, any questions or comments to Steve? Any comments there? All right. Well, thanks for presenting that. And it's good to see a bit of a plan out there that can help those businesses and and lay out what we're going to be moving forward with. So then this was moved by Counselor Patterson and second by Counselor Woodbury. Is there anybody opposed to this resolution? Seeing none, that is Carrie. Thanks, Savannah, and thanks, Steve, for that. And if sure, if anybody else has any questions furthering up from this, they could follow up with you.
Thank you.
All right. So now moving forward with our agenda. Our next one is the with regards to the SWIFT report. And Kim is is going to take take this one on, and it's moved by Counselor Robinson and second by Counselor Hicks, Deputy Mayor. Kim, I'm CEO.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. The council will recall that we last spoke about SWIFT on May 14th, when we looked at the report with regard to the loan guarantee. And just in case you missed it, there was a press release out from MPP Walker earlier this week that the the RFP that covers the Gray County projects is on the street. It closes July 10th, and they're looking at a $16 million investment in new high-speed internet in Gray County. So we'll be looking forward to that. This particular report is now looking more to the future. And there are two things. One is just an update on where Western Ontario Wardens Caucus is looking towards the the future of support and advocacy for more high-speed internet. And also asking about whether county council would lend their name to a couple of of letters requesting additional funding from federal entities. So Western Ontario Wardens Caucus called a special meeting on June the 4th. They wanted to talk about the potential of a SWIFT 2.0. Right now, we're in the last phase of the original SWIFT funding, so wanting to look at where do you want to go with the future? And also talking about some of the projects or funding streams that are available to us now. CRTC has a $750 million broadband fund. And ISED, which is the Industry Science and Economic Development, has a $1.7 billion universal broadband fund vote available at this time. The Wardens Caucus feels that funding from the province and the Government of Canada is urgently needed to address our region's large connectivity gaps that we've certainly understand understanding the impact of those as we try to cope with COVID and we're moving into a virtual world. Western Ontario Wardens Caucus supports the funding of a SWIFT model as the mechanism to advance the expansion of broadband infrastructure across the region. We now know, having been through three phases of of SWIFT projects, that the model works, it delivers results and can be immediately leveraged to upgrade networks and coverage in our region's underserved areas. When they talked about SWIFT 2.0, caucus was presented with five options. One was to just, you know, let lie and let people go out on their own and try and pursue projects as best they could. Options two, three, and four included municipalities pursuing individually, pursuing funding as a group, or actually doing more what's happened in Eastern Ontario, where they actually designed the projects themselves and then RFP'd them. In the end, as I've said, they felt that using the SWIFT model was one that had a lot of merit. SWIFT 2.0 would see Western Wardens pursuing funding and executing $500 million worth of projects. The focus would be on fiber rather than wireless. And I thought that might be an interesting shift for for some of you. And and really being very clear about our target as being unserved areas to a maximum density of about 15 premises per kilometer. And just by way of comparison, the average density of unserved premises in Gray is 5.4. So certainly, anything that we have would be well within that threshold. The federal and provincial governments would be requested to provide 367 million with the municipalities responsible for 50 in project spend and 10 in project administration. So the SWIFT 2.0 model would see increase in the subsidy that was available for ISPs. These are, as we move through These are, um, as we move through this process. Um, the, it becomes less and less desirable. A return on investment gets longer for the internet service providers. So, um, providing enough with additional subsidy was meant to make these projects more attractive. And, um, beyond that $500 million request for SWIFT 2.0 funding. Western Wardens would also request 44 million to complete the remaining unfunded SWIFT. The current SWIFT, uh, group of projects that they are aware of. And this would include, um, almost $6 million worth of work in Gray County. So that's the SWIFT piece that's separate. We don't need to do anything at this time. Um, the advocacy work, uh, that the economic development group within Western Ontario Wardens Caucus is, is taking on. Would simply be working hard to pursue that funding should, um, we be successful. Should the words caucus actually see money from the province for SWIFT 2.0? And we would have another conversation at this table. The CRTC and ISED, uh, program requests, um, right now. You feel it's important that Southwestern Ontario, which is 10% of, uh, of the population of Canada. Should reasonably expect to receive something similar as far as a share of the program funding. Western words must advocate for the region's fair share. And, um, applications are opening this year for, for that money. And, um, they are asking that we provide the letters that are attached to this report. From Gray County to both CRTC and to ISED. So that's it in a nutshell, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thanks, Madam CEO. And do, would you want a separate resolution for that letter? Or just that you just feel that if this report's supported, then that would be automatic?
Yeah, the recommendation to receive this report and then, and then it follows that, uh, we submit the letters for CRTC and ISED. So it is part of the resolution and if passed, then we'll, staff will work to make sure they.
Okay, so it is, uh, it is moved by councillor Robinson and councillor Hicks. Is there any questions to this report? Uh, okay, I got councillor Potter. I see him on the screen. Go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Warden. Um, yes. Do, what kind of commitment do we have? We're, we're, once again, we're being asked put money into this program. That so far has underperformed and now we're being asked for more. Uh, without any commitment as to what they might do. Uh, without any commitment as to transparency and in terms of reporting to us and to the people who pay the taxes in Gray County. And, uh, we don't have any commitment that we, as a council, will have any say. In what they're doing, what we're going to do in Blue Mountains. We have a, a motion coming forward on Monday to form a task force. Uh, to look into this ourselves, uh, to see where we stand and, and what is possible. Uh, because this is just way too important to let another 10 years go by with nothing being done. Um, so at least, at least we have this commitment that they're going to put some money our way. Uh, but we are going to be putting money their way. And, and on that basis, I would like to know. More about what kind of say we will have, what kind of say our rate pairs will have. Uh, and, uh, what, uh, reporting we will get in return. So I have a lot more, but I realize that we're, uh, we, we have a lot on the go and there are probably lots of other speakers. So I'll leave it at that for now, but thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Potter. Madam CEO, do you have any comments to that?
Well, a, a couple, I think. First of all, uh, Gray County has put in slightly more than $1 million. Into, into the SWIFT program and will receive under the RFPs that, that are out right now. In excess of $15 million. So we are seeing some significant investment in infrastructure. Based on the investment that we've, that we've made. Um, with regard to, um, the, the future and, and SWIFT 2.0. I think the discussion around the table with regard to looking at fiber and, and wanting to, um, direct more. Of our influence into securing, uh, fiber investments is something, um, that might be a positive step. For, um, future is fiber is foundational and, and I think facilitates further investment in wireless. And, and other, um, types of, um, high-speed internet. Um, we think we are having to be careful about not running afoul of the bonusing rules. We, we must run a competitive process when we're, we're working with, um, with tax money. And, um, I, I think that, um, SWIFT. And, and the province and the federal government remain very committed to that. So, you know, as much as we can make projects attractive and we can make sure that we've done all of the homework that we can. So that people understand where the projects are and where the opportunities are. At the end of the day, it needs to be competitive and the internet service providers, um, will step up. Where, where they feel that there's a business opportunity to do so.
Okay.
Mr. Warden, I do have a list of, um, speakers, uh, councillor Hicks.
Yes.
Councillor Robinson and councillor soever.
Okay, I will go through the list. Okay, thank you for that, Madam Clerk. So going down the list, Deputy Mayor Warden. Uh, so when Hicks, you have the floor, councillor Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, just responding to councillor Potter. I'm, I'm a little surprised by your comments because I would have thought that the exciting announcement this week would have put a smile on your face. I mean, we are seeing, uh, potentially a 15-time multiplier of our investment. And, and those projects are now up, uh, with a request for proposal. Uh, this is really, really good news for the people in Gray County. Um, I, I want to say that, uh, in, in my view, uh, the SWIFT, uh, two-point bowl, um, option was the best option. You'll notice that in that range of options, there was an option for going it alone. Um, I dare say, I, I don't think, uh, you'll be able to get the kind of success, uh, that SWIFT is producing, going it alone. Uh, but you know, maybe, maybe I'm wrong there. Um. SWIFT, you have to remember, is a creature of the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus. Uh, and so you'll notice that the proposals will, might come from SWIFT. But any, uh, activity with respect to, uh, a request for funding or pushing, uh, for funding. Has to come from the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus. In my view, the, the target, the new target for, um, SWIFT 2.0 focusing on medium density, uh, outcomes. Makes a lot of sense, uh, given that the average, uh, density of our, on-service roads is just. 5.4 homes per kilometer in Gray County. I think that it makes a lot of sense to, uh, target on the medium density, uh, outcomes. So in other words, um, you, we're going to increase the subsidies, uh, uh, for the internet service providers. From 67% to 83%, because we need to make that more attractive for them. And at the same time, we'll be giving greater points to those proposals. Um, that focus on kilometers, uh, of fiber run. Rather than focusing on the homes that you might, uh, might be passing. I think that makes a lot of sense. The, uh, the request for $44 million to, uh, address some, some residual projects from SWIFT 2.1. Also makes a lot of sense because these are projects that have come forward. They, if we had the money, we would have funded them. Uh, they're ready to go. Uh, everything's in place. If we have that 44 million, uh, we'd be able to get going right away. Because we wouldn't need to go back and ask for further, uh, requests for proposals there in place already. Uh, the big issue that I really wanted, I think, needs a lot of attention from us. Is that proposal, uh, that the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus approved. Which talked about letting municipalities decide if they want to allow, uh, wireless proposals in their region. Um, I have to tell you, uh, that issue will really depend on what the province allows us to do. Uh, right now, the, the province mandates, uh, that we focus on, um, areas. Uh, where someone doesn't have a claim that, that they're able to meet that minimum requirement, the 50, uh, down and 10, uh, 10 up. So in my view, uh, in, in terms of local advocacy, I would suggest that we be approaching. Um, uh, AMO, uh, AMO, approaching a delegation with respect to that issue. Um, that we be able to as municipalities, uh, make a local decision about whether we favor. Um, uh, fiber or sorry, wireless projects, uh, or not. Um. Currently, uh, um, if we look at, uh, Gray County. If you draw a line down, uh, north to south, separating west and east of Gray County. About half of Gray County will be exempted, meaning SWIFT cannot, uh, put a project in the eastern half. Uh, of Gray County because there have been successful claims by wireless, um, uh, entities. Uh, that they can meet that minimum requirement. Uh, so, uh, in, in my view, that's a debate that we're going to have to have as a county. And, uh, uh, that's why I say, uh, I would be pushing very hard for the province to allow local municipalities. To make a decision about whether or not, um, they favor wireless over, uh, fiber. Uh, in, in my personal, uh, view, fiber is the best. Um, nothing is greater than the speed of light, uh, and that's what fiber is. You don't get anything faster than that. Uh, fiber is robust, it's dependable and it's affordable. That's the other factor that we have to keep in mind. It's one thing to say, yes, we've got this service, but can I afford it? And is it dependable? Or is it going to fall down all the time? Um, I guess on that point, I would ask you to consider the difference between a land, uh, if you have a phone. Consider the difference between your landline and a cell phone. Uh, that's really the difference there. Uh, so those are the comments that I wanted to make and I'll be supporting the recommendation.
Okay, uh, thank you very much for that, Deputy Warden, councillor Hicks. And, uh, next I'll go on to councillor Robinson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you, I, I'm appreciating all of the discussion that we're having on broad, on broadband. It, um, certainly at Gray County, we've elevated that discussion level. Um, I'm pleased with the, the good news announcements from, from the province. And I'm equally pleased that broadband has been elevated on our, uh, Gray County agendas. In, in terms of, uh, reports and discussions, um, uh, by Gray County Council. I would very much, uh, well, I am the second or so, I'm happy with the recommendation. But I would very much appreciate on behalf of Gray County Council and our Gray County residents and business owners. If we could have, um, whether it's through the Western Warden Caucus or SWIFT, come again to, um. Our Gray County Council and do a delegation in terms of providing, um, you know, status report. Uh, an update fiber versus any other options, um, you know, just a, uh, maybe a diagnostic of, um. Uh, broadband in relation to Gray County, um, terrain. So I'm looking for more of a, more, more discussion at our virtual horseshoe. But also have that discussion fanned out to our Gray County residents. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Okay, uh, thank you, councillor Robinson. And you're actually the mover of this resolution and councillor Hicks is the second or so. There you go.
Thank you.
Um, councillor soever, you were next.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, so I have a lot of questions. Um, I'll try to be brief. Um, in the, the staff report, there's a couple of things. Um, it says, it's, sir, in the minutes, and I'm comparing the staff report to the minutes. Of the, the, the Western Wardens Caucus. And there, they, there is, um. An upper, it says upper limit on premises pass per kilometer of fiber. And then it says allow municipal input to target more or less dense areas. And in the staff report, it has a number of 15 premises per kilometer. Has there been a decision actually made on what that density is, the upper limit that's eligible for projects? Or is it still an open question?
They'll go to the CAO first, Madam CEO.
In the, in the slides, they talked about, if you, if you look at the slides and they talked about.
Yes.
Making a decision about targeting medium density. And that that medium density, I'm gonna, talked out at 15.4 premises per kilometer is my understanding. Um, further to, uh, the points that, um, councillor Hicks made. However, all of this is contingent on us receiving funding for a program. And, uh, whatever, um, a program guidelines that, that funder sees fit to impose on us. So, um, we're advocating for what we feel would be, um, most viable and most useful. For, for our communities.
Yes, okay, so the, the 15 isn't a firm number yet, then, but it's a discussion.
Will be firm unless we actually receive, yeah, and receive a confirmed funding.
Okay, um, and then, so now we're going to the. The, um, we're, we're bumping this up city from 83 from the current 67 to the providers. Um, and, um, so does that mean the current programs aren't working?
No, I think though, as, as projects roll out, um, certainly, you know, the companies. If, if I can speak on behalf of the internet service providers. I, I think our experience with business suggests that you're going to take the projects that are going to. Give you the best return on your investment the most quickly. And so as those projects are undertaken and completed, then, you know, people will move down the list. So they become, projects become certainly less attractive from a financial perspective. From the companies or the terrain is more difficult or the population is less dense. So you're incentivizing the behavior that you want to see, which is please come and make internet available to those places. That are even more rural than the initial ones that were serviced.
So the Great County projects, so. Um, SWIFT 2.2, there, it says there's 4.2 million for 549 kilometers of fiber. But the SWIFT presentation, um, it shows that there's actually 2734 kilometers of unserviced road. So that would mean that even with SWIFT 2.0, we're only going to service 20% of the unserviced road?
It's a huge, huge need out there. And I think this has been well covered in the media. Just to the extent to which Ontario is a huge province and southwestern Ontario is a huge geography. So, um, you know, it's going to take a number of years to be able to, to get, um, these gaps filled in.
And then it says that there's a request for another 44 million for the unfunded SWIFT 1.0 projects. But I see the government did, the federal government and, and both the province have already allocated $63.7 million each. For those projects. So is this 44 million on top of the, the money that was in the provincial funding announcement of January 20th?
That's my understanding, yes.
So, and then this, this has my concern and I'm all for high rural, high-speed internet. And this is where, but if you look at the SWIFT financials, they were fully financed in 2016. And since then, they've spent, um, quite a bit of money. Uh, they've collected 14 million from the partners and 2 million from, no, it's 11.9 from the partners. So almost 12 from the partners and 2 million in government grants. But to the end of 2018, their 2019 financial statements aren't yet available. But, um, so they've collected, uh, 14 million and they've spent seven, but nothing was spent on projects. Even though in 2018, in their financial statements, they, they had budgeted. 18, $80 million worth of projects and delivered exactly nothing and spent nothing on these projects with a delay. So.
I think that some of the questions might be better put to Barry Field. He certainly, he did commit to us that, um, once the embargo on communications had been lifted. And he'd be in a position to speak to projects that he would be willing to come back and speak to this council, further to councillor Robinson's point. Um, I think there are a number of, of reasons why, um, both at the provincial and federal level. Why things move or why they don't. But it, it really would be, uh, Mr. Fields' purview to speak to those. I, I'm not in a position, I'm afraid.
Yeah, and I think that, uh, that's really what I'm getting around to asking for. Because when you analyze Swift going back to twenty sixteen, if they were a private corporation right now, nobody would fund them. Not only haven't they met their targets and delivered on time and within budget, but they also have a twenty-three person board with one person that has demonstrable communication telecommunications experience. So, when you look at that, if they were a private corporation going to raise money from the public, people would say, well, you got a twenty-three person board, you have one person that is actually has extensive experience on your board in the business you're in. You're not gonna get funded. And I think, you know, as stewards of the public purse, we need to get answers to these questions, then, you know, I think it's, I, I'm all for internet. And I think if people were subsidized to eighty-three percent, you'd have people lining up at your door with projects. And, you know, my question is, yeah, fiber is the best, it's the platinum standard. It'd be great if everybody could get fiber, but we're looking at even two point oh covering only twenty percent for four point two million dollars of our, of our portion, never mind the federal government and the province. You know, we have to look and say, can you deliver fifty, ten, or better? I've been approached by a major internet provider that says they can do probably twice fifty, ten with five G technology as long as their towers are connected by fiber. So, I, I think it behooves us to see if we can, you know, ask these questions of Swift and say, you know, what guarantees are there that the performance is gonna be improved over what it has been since twenty sixteen?
And so, Counselor, so ever, that you bring some good points. I'm not sure, Counselor Hicks, are you able to, Deputy Warden, are you able to add some, I know you sit on the board, and maybe you've had more of these conversations there.
Well, I, I think that Counselor Soever and Counselor Potter and everyone else will, will be able to have all of their questions answered now that the embargo on communication is, is over and we can speak. You will have those questions answered. We will invite Mr. Field to come and make a presentation and make himself available. I think what I'm focusing on is the bottom line. For the people, I'm confident in saying to the people of Gray County that you're getting a fifteen times multiplier on your investment. That's the bottom line. You know, talking about the, the fiber, and when you lay fiber, if you, if you lay one kilometer of fiber and it crosses, it passes a thousand homes, you're not gonna incentivize the internet service provider that much. They're not gonna need an incentive in order to lay that fiber. But if you're laying a kilometer of fiber and it's passing five homes, that's really what Swift is all about. We're trying to get internet out to those people who ordinarily would not be a target for the internet service providers without some sort of incentive. That's what Swift is, is very much trying to do. So, you know, look, we will continue. We've had very good discussion. I, I can count now, I think, at least three meetings at which we've had discussion on broadband. It's an important topic. We'll continue to have those discussions. And I'm happy that now that the embargo is gone, Mr. Field will be able to come, and you'll be able to have all of your questions answered. By the way, he did make a presentation to this very council not that long ago.
Warden, I have Counselor Body as well.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Body, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. It's, hearing a fifteen million re- return on a one million investment is something that we should be. Of course, we've got to complete it, but we, that's something we should be pumping out. So, it's pretty easy for people to understand. And it's not something necessarily that I understood perhaps as a counselor prior to this moment. I, I think we gotta think of ourselves as being pioneers, you know. Somebody built a log cabin a hundred years ago, and then they put in running water, and it was quite a while before they got the toilet. And the hot shower was long after that. We're, we're spending a lot of money, and we're, we're building something that our successors in council, long after we're around, are going to keep building on. And we're not gonna see the hot water shower, you know, immediately. You know, to say that a private corporation wouldn't get funding, et cetera, you know, that might be fair. But a private corporation wouldn't be looking at fiber here. It's not a good return on the investment. They wouldn't be interested. We're relying on private corporations and how they operate. Bell Telephone Rogers wouldn't be interested. They want to amortize their fiber in a much shorter period of time. So, you know, this is what we've got. Luckily, we've got government people that are, the Gray Wardens, sorry, the Western Wardens Caucus that have been working on this and have been working on this for a number of years. And little by little by little, we're, we're getting someplace that we wouldn't have got otherwise. On Towers versus Fiber, I know here we had a proposal to put in a tower, and it was about as popular as a wind turbine. People didn't want it in their neighborhood. It's something we'll have to think about as we move forward. But they're not as popular as what's running under the ground, and we don't see it. And fiber, I think, is a better building block going forward. But again, we're building, we're, we're, we're just starting off. We're just building. Got a long way to go. I look forward to hearing some of the answers from the experts. But I'm, I, I, I think we're, we're perhaps, including me, we're perhaps have been, nor being impatient, expecting something that we shouldn't expect. But those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Body. And before I make the last few comments, Madam Court, is there anybody else wishes to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, so, we do have this on here, and it's been suggested that now that the communication gag is over, we can invite Mr. Fields to come to our council. We've had great conversation, which is fantastic, because we, we certainly realize that internet, certainly because of COVID nineteen, has become a real high point in the sense of necessity. And, and I've made comments from people different press that asked me is we're gonna continue to want more and more internet and higher speed internet because of the, of the society and where we're heading. So, I guess the only question I have, and maybe this is to Counselor Hicks, Deputy Warden, is and it's about providing the minimum standard to across the county, is at some time, maybe when Barry comes, is if there's certain areas of our county that are, that are opting out because of that ten up and, or sorry, fifty up and ten, ten down, I think you said. Is there an area, like a map, that will be provided to show where those areas, that money will be funded because of that, of that areas of not being provided to you, Counselor Hicks? And that's something maybe to take back to the board, and maybe not able to provide it in the near future. But is that something that we will, could be able to see?
Yes, so you can see that right now on the Swift website. The maps are available.
Okay.
And they are updated as the proposals come in and as we see where the projects will actually be. I can tell you right now that one of my concerns is that Swift is really only focused on the western half of Gray County.
Okay.
Because of that fifty, that mandate around that the province has put in to say, if somebody claims and successfully claims to be able to provide a download of fifty and an upload of ten, if they can meet that requirement, regardless of how affordable or, you know, how reliable, I suppose, to an extent it might be, we have to stay away from those areas.
Right, okay. And there's nothing stopping that companies out there can expand to have fiber and having a customer base that they can expand beyond that if they feel that there's a market for it, I presume.
That's exactly the, the hope, is that once that infrastructure is expanded, keep in mind that, you know, five G and all of these other technologies, they're still reliant on fiber in the ground. So, the more we expand that sort of skeleton of the system, the better off we'll be with being able to provide other types of options as well. By the way, there was a figure, and I don't remember it, Kim might remember this figure, in the presentation made to the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, about how many billion dollars it would take to fiberize all of the underservice roads right now in southwestern Ontario. It's a huge, huge figure. This is, again, not the silver bullet, but it certainly is a very good project to have happening. This is great news for Gray County.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Deputy Warden, Counselor Hicks. And Kim, do you have any last comments before?
There is, in this, in the slide deck, there is a slide titled, How Much Money Do We Need? And the remaining need, should we be successful with, with all of this advocacy work, would still be one point seven billion dollars. Now, that's a straight up fiber numbers. So, I would anticipate it would be something less than that because of our places where fiber simply doesn't work. But to Counselor Hicks's point, it's a huge, huge need.
Right. And I think there was a change, I think, either late two thousand eighteen, early two thousand nineteen, with the structure of Swift, that there were some changes made, and I think that was around the time when Counselor Hicks was appointed to that board to be, I think, a little bit more accountable there as well, if I recall. Okay, so, well.
Mr. Warden?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I have Counselor Millen, and I have Counselor Soever with a follow-up.
Okay, sorry, Counselor Millen and Counselor Soever.
Just, just to comment, Mr. Warden, regarding the return on the investment, don't forget that there are local companies that are bidding on these RFPs as well. So, there's a multiplier effect if they get these projects, and they're very dedicated to the community. And I dare say that if they get one of these projects or more, you know, there's, there's ways they can multiply the effect of those monies locally. So, I think it's very important that we, we concentrate on the return on the investment. And as Counselor Hex has pointed out, this is a tremendous opportunity for Gray County.
Thanks for that, Counselor Millen, and, and Counselor Soever.
Yes, just Blue Mountains is in the eastern part of Gray County, and a large part of our, our area does qualify for performance. I think it's Gray Highlands is the one that's in the excluded block, if I remember the map correctly. So, there is a large part of rural town of Blue Mountains. I just wanted to make that clear, that, that will qualify, even though we're in the eastern part. We're not entirely excluded.
Right, yeah, and that's based on the local providers that have been expanding. I'll sort of say that here in Gray Highlands as well, for sure. Any further comments out there? I mean, certainly for those particular comments, that we get Barry Fields back here at a certain time, and you can sort of address those parts with regards to the financial and the boards and, and the accountability and that sense, for sure. So, so this was moved by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Hicks, Deputy Warden. Any further comments? Any opposed to this report? Hearing none, that is carried. Okay, thank you. Good discussion. I mean, I think from the general public is, we're very interested in broadband, and provincial and federal governments are very much attenable to, to that, what's being heard out there. So, this was an addition, moving on to the next one, P D R C W thirty twenty, Home Farm Subdivision update. This was a late addition, and I have this moved by Counselor Keveney and second by Counselor Millen. And I think Scott, are you on the line there to take on this report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden and members of council, and I will try to be brief with this because I recognize that the report itself was, was not overly brief for sure. So, I'm just going to try to bring up a map here. Hopefully, everybody can see that. So, what we have before us is a plan of subdivision, and the subject lands are shown in blue there. And I will note some neighboring developments, Eden Oak to sort of the northeast and Park Bridge to the north, as well as some town-owned lands shown in red there as well. The proposed development would look at two hundred and fifteen new residential units in addition to some park space, some open space areas, and other protected lands. Sorry, can you see the, the map on the screen?
For Mike, it's, it's going in circles. We need better broadband.
I will try to reshare, sorry about that.
Maybe it's one of those switches.
Is it showing up there now?
Yes. Is everybody else have it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry about that. Don't blame the switches, blame the user in this case. So, so, yeah, this is a development for two hundred and fifteen units. It's comprised of mostly townhomes with some singles. The, the subject lands are about fifty-five hectares in size in terms of what's shown in blue there on your screen. And I would note that this development was originally submitted in, in two thousand and fifteen, and it was submitted via a plan of subdivision application, as well as a zoning amendment application, and official plan application, official plan amendment application to the town. The initial applications were proposing development on lands shown in blue, as well as development on the land shown in red there owned by the town. At that time, there was a memorandum of understanding in place between the town and the developer to look at a land exchange, which would have the developer developing those town-owned lands. As such, at that time, they were looking at two hundred and seventy-seven units rather than the two hundred and fifteen being proposed now. That memorandum of understanding is no longer in place. As such, we're dealing with a subdivision that's, that's just looking at the lands in blue there. I would note that all three of these applications were appealed to, at that time, what was called the Ontario Municipal Board, just before it transitioned to the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal, based on non-decisions by both the, the county and the town respectively. In the report, it notes that there was a two-week hearing scheduled for this, this matter, starting on July twentieth. As of Tuesday of this week, that hearing has now been canceled by the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal, although we are hopeful that, subject to council's review today, that we'll be able to request a settlement hearing, and that can likely be done virtually or via teleconference. The new residential development and the park space will, will have access off of a series of internal roads coming off of Gray Road nineteen, both off of Helen Street and off of a, a new road that will be coming off adjacent to Birch's Boulevard, just to the west there. I would note that the lands are varied in topography because we have the, the Nipissing Ridge crossing these lands. And, and the lands that are being developed today or proposed to be developed are sort of the uplands, if you will, in, in the western portion of the property. There are some further lowlands that would be developed potentially in the future, sort of adjacent to the Eden Oak Development and off of Birchview Trail just to the south there. The other important feature on the site, and which is, which is quite interesting, is, is a former First Nations village site. And, and this site actually dates back hundreds of years. It's, it's been called the Plater Martin Site. And so, that was a significant consideration in terms of looking at, at the development of this site. So, that Plater Martin Site will not be developed as part of this development. And there are some proposed draft plan conditions that speak to further engagement with the Solgino-Jibway Nation, as well as having the Solgino-Jibway Nation on-site as the lands are being cleared, just to make sure there's no further evidence of burials or any other artifacts outside of the, the mapped Plater Martin Site. This application has been circulated to agencies who are generally supportive of the development now with the, the recommended draft plan conditions attached to this report. There was public consultation, of course, as part of this process, and we did get some public comments and concerns with respect to this development. And they really fell into the categories of, of traffic impacts, impacts on the environment, whether or not the, the development was consistent with both town and county planning documents. There were some comments about the former memorandum of understanding, and there were some comments about the proposed development in proximity to some of the existing homes off of Gray Road nineteen. With respect to the traffic, they did do a traffic impact study for this development, and that was when it was still proposed at two hundred and seventy-seven units. Both town staff and county transportation staff are now satisfied that, that this development can be accommodated into the, the road network and have no further traffic concerns in that regard. With respect to the, the impacts on the environment, both the county and the town jointly hired a peer reviewer to review all of the environmental aspects of this development. There was a, a large series of back and forths between our peer reviewer and, and the developers' environmental consultant. And subject to some addendums and, and some draft plan conditions being issued, the county and town peer reviewer is, is supportive of the development. And I would note that both the Niagara Skirt Commission and the Gray Sawal Conservation Authority were also reviewing the environmental aspects of this development as well. With respect to planning conformity, that's generally covered in the staff report, and I'll just touch on the very highlights here today. With respect to the memorandum of understanding, this is not a, a document that's being considered by either council here today or by the tribunal. The memorandum of understanding is no longer in place, so there's no further need to address those comments. And with respect to the proximity to the existing homes, this comment was this comment was raised by a landowner who owns two homes along the county road, which immediately abut the town-owned lands, which are shown in red on the screen. Now that the town-owned lands are no longer being part of this development, that's become less of a concern. And I will note with this particular landowner, there's also been a lot addition to the rear of their two properties. As such, there's further buffer space available there as well. One of the other things I would note with respect to this development is it was originally submitted in 2015. And since 2015, we've had changes to the Planning Act. We've had the new provincial policy statement. We've had a new Niagara Skirtment Plan, new county official plan, a new town official plan, and a new town zoning bylaw. I would note that in the staff review at both the county and town level, we've been looking at the most recent versions of each of those documents because they represent our respective councils' reflection of the public interest in its most current form. I would also note that based on the changes to the town official plan that happened in their 2016 official plan, as well as the removal of the town-owned lands from this proposed development, a town official plan amendment is no longer required. Staff have been working, staff at the county have been working with staff at the town as well as the proponent on a potential settlement for this matter. And that would involve a settlement on the draft plan of subdivision as well as the zoning amendment. Both the proponent and town staff have been excellent to work with. And we think, subject to council's concurrence here today, we have a settlement in place. There may be some further minor tweaks to the wording. But the parties, my understanding is, are generally satisfied. This matter was presented to town council, my understanding is, in camera this past Friday, which is why this report was slightly later in being sent out to county council. And I do apologize for that. As such, county staff are seeking council's support for the draft plan conditions that are provided with this report, such that we can move forward, hopefully, with a settlement for the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal. So that's what I have for you today, but I'd certainly be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Okay, well, thanks, Scott, for that. And I'll go back to county council and just speak up because I can't see you at the point. Just speak up if you have any questions. Anybody out there have any questions or Madam Clerk?
I have a question, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Scott, I'm just wondering how much of the proposed property is taken up by the indigenous location?
Scott?
Sure, through you, Mr. Warden. I'm going to try sharing a different map here, just a second.
Was that the red area on your map?
No, the red area was the town-owned lands. So can you now see the draft plan of subdivision on the map, on your screen?
Yep.
Okay, so what's called the Plater Martin Lands, the archaeological site, are roughly in the northeast of the development. And I'm kind of trying to highlight it in my cursor here. So as I said, it's not being developed, you know, if I had to estimate, you know, based on total land area, it's maybe 15%. But there's a lot of lands even surrounding the Plater Martin Lands that are encompassed by the Nipissing Ridge, so those wouldn't be developed either. What you will see is there's sort of a cul-de-sac that ends just before the Plater Martin Lands. So there would be the ability for First Nations or other groups still to access these lands. But both through the zoning and through wording in the subdivision agreement, they would be protected in perpetuity.
So if I might, Mr. Warden, the intent, excuse me, the intent for that piece of the property is to just remain fallow, so to speak? Or is it going to be used in some fashion?
Sure, through you, Mr. Warden. That's a very good question. In the town's 2004 official plan, they originally envisioned sort of a heritage park here. These lands have long been known, thanks in part to work of a local gentleman named Charles Garrard. And so it was always the intent to protect these lands. So in the town's 2004 official plan, they were going to be made into sort of a commemorative heritage park. Once this particular developer started consulting with First Nations all across North America, because there was a number of nations that have used this site in a transitory basis in the last couple hundred years, it was determined by some of the First Nations that they actually didn't want to park here. They didn't want these lands commemorated in that fashion for a number of reasons, but in part based on worry that you might see some amateur archaeologists, if you will, exploring the site in a fashion that maybe isn't fitting of these lands. As such, what they've asked for is protection of the land such that there's no development there. But it won't be sort of an open manicured or used park in that sense. They will be more of a naturalized open space. And one of the draft plan conditions is recommending that we further work with the Tsau Gino-Jibway Nation on how these lands remain protected, if you will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Counsel Soever.
Counsel Soever, go ahead.
Thank you. We did meet and we did give instructions to our planning staff to come back with a final version of the settlement agreement once it has been completed. And that has not yet come to our council. Once it's, so there were a few minor issues that were still left to be outstanding. So I wouldn't want to have this council jump the gun because they can give their approval before we have confirmation that the developer has agreed to the final few minor issues that needed, the i's that needed to be dotted and the t's that needed to be crossed. So the problems we have, this is one of the problems we have with the two-tier planning system when you got two planning departments, although I know they work together. But, and you have two councils, so.
Okay, any comments, Scott, there?
Sure, yeah, thank you for those comments, Counselor, Counselor Soever. So following the town in-camera session last Friday, the council for each of the parties, being the proponent, the county and the town, were all in touch. And my understanding is, the town's lawyer shared those comments that were put forward by town council with respective parties. As such, there were some further changes made to the draft plan conditions to address those comments. It's my understanding. So we're now on what's called version six of the draft plan conditions. And town staff drafted up some comments to address town council's concerns. That's my understanding, anyway. And those were shared amongst the parties. And my understanding is that the parties have consented to those changes that town council had requested versus the version that was presented to them last Friday.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, is there anybody else wish to speak to this report?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. And again, this was moved by Counsel Kivini and second by Counsel Milon. Any opposed to this report being carried? Okay, hearing none, that is carried. Thank you. Now, we have no closed session. Our other business on our agenda is delegation requests. We've had some brief comments even at our last council meeting about those. And I'm going to go to CIO to update what she has in front of her. Madam CEO?
Okay, we have, there's a couple that have been raised. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, we had previously raised the regional transportation project, a discussion with MTO. I have reached out to Gray Bruce Health Services. Now, we have a meeting with them at the first of the week. They may be amenable to having a delegation with regard to the Markdale Hospital project. So if that moved ahead, we can add that to our delegation list. Those were the key two. There's one that hasn't been brought to council's attention yet and it has to do with some correspondence that will be on the July 9th meeting that have to do with a request for protein processing slaughter facility and whether or not we want to put a holding spot in there for a discussion in that regard.
That would be for the agricultural minister, I presume?
Exactly, exactly.
Now, I spoke to Minister Walker yesterday or the day before about the Markdale Hospital. And he indicated to me that it's on track. And he's sort of left it, that if there's issues or concerns, to let him know. So he really didn't indicate that we really, you know, we're having that meeting next week, which is moving forward. I know, I spoke to our, in Gray Highlands, I spoke to our Public Utilities Director yesterday and they pretty much worked out all the issues around the site plan, other than whatever has to be there. So I think things are moving forward. I just would hate to go in front of a minister and not only waste your time, but in a sense of, you know, things are moving along. So, I mean, we can put it as a placeholder. We have, I think we can have up to three placeholders. And we can always, if we get more information, even from next week, that indicates that maybe there's no really urgency to me. I guess we can make that decision later on, but I guess you have to put those requests in. So I just, I discovered that, got that from our local MPP, Bill Walker, the other day, that as he feels it is moving along. And I know even from our local foundation and what I picked up, you know, things seem to be moving along, you know.
That was my understanding, so that's good.
Yeah. So county council, any other thoughts on delegation requests? I mean, this is a virtual delegation. And I think, as I understand, well, I know you have to be registered to be part of those delegations. And I know there's quite a few on county council that are, either from the county side or from the lower-tier side. But certainly, they are very much open to having conversations. I know it was mentioned about 20 minutes ago about the further conversations about infrastructure as far as internet and broadband. And I guess, Madam CEO, if that was a request, that would be through Infrastructure Minister? Would that be, or where would that be? Or Minister Peterson, or Peters, I should say?
Minister Scott.
Yeah, Minister Scott, but I, yeah. But also on the other part of the multiple ministers too, because finance is also part of that probably as well. And so is that, you know?
We can add that broadband was on my potential list as well, so further to a earlier discussion that we had.
Finance, do we need Minister Finance with regards to, or Minister Peters with regards to our COVID-19 expenses? And, you know, issues around that is, is that something of concern or something we maybe should follow up on? I'll leave it there?
Yes, yep.
So.
Mr. Warden, I can see Counsel Hicks as well.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel Hicks, Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The two ministries concerned with broadband would be infrastructure and OMAFRA.
Okay, so OMAFRA, okay. So OMAFRA, that is Minister Hardman, right? As far as OMAFRA? And if you, so if there's other issues that you want to address along with that?
Yeah, I think the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus is, of course, going to continue their advocacy around future funding. But I think more locally, I would want us, or would propose that we address the issue of some autonomy for, a little bit more autonomy for local municipalities to be able to have some control over decisions like fiber versus wireless.
Okay, thoughts, anyone? Kim?
Well, I think that's a good suggestion. I think that our role to kind of come in behind Western Wardens with the overall advocacy and funding and then we're to say, you know, wanting to advocate for the ability to take some decisions at the council table about the, some of the finer details about the form of those projects that's going to work the best for the Gray County-specific situation.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, I see Counsel Mackey had his hand up as well.
Okay, Counsel Mackey?
Thank you, Warden. I'm just wondering if we should be meeting with the Ministry of Health in regards to the potential of, you know, one point, was it two or $1.4 million deficit in long-term care? Just to make sure that, you know, keep their feet to the fire and let them know that there's been a lot of dollars spent to keep our seniors safe and that we're expecting some help from the ministry.
Okay, well, I could be along with, just to rest the follow-up with long-term care and where things are at as well, maybe I, well, I guess that's a separate ministry. Long-term care is separate to Ministry of Health, right?
Yes.
Right, there are two separate ministries now. So, yeah, so that would be Minister Fullerton is, if you're talking about long-term care.
Yes.
So what's your thoughts? So how many you got in the list, Madam CEO?
So we have broadband, we have regional transportation, and then we have the funding support for COVID costs within long-term care.
Okay, all right, is that same, I know three seems to be the magic number. Is that okay with everybody? Do we need a motion then, Madam CEO? Or Madam Clerk? Okay, so who would like to?
You actually have it moved. I think it was in the list that I sent you.
Okay, I, okay, I do have it here. Okay, those that do have on my list is Counsel Woodbury and Counsel Robinson. Are you okay with those three, I guess, in the sense, I know it was like a blank sheet, right? So I, I'm seeing Counsel Woodbury and Counsel Robinson?
Well, Mr. Chair, I definitely would, I had a list of six. Regional Transportation, Markdale Hospital, advocating for broadband funding. And I like the add-on of the ability to make the finer detailed decisions at the local level. Advocating for COVID funding, just overall, but definitely for long-term care funding. And I'm not certain, I guess, we're taking off the list the discussion for avatars for, at the local level.
That could be a problem. If we're going to meet with the Minister OMAFRA with regards to broadband, I would think you could probably slide that one in there as well.
Yeah, that's creative and a good idea.
Okay, so I was always under the impression that you applied for three. Yeah, that's sort of your magic number. I guess you could apply for more, Madam CEO. Do you have any?
Oh, yeah, no, it's fine. They, they don't mind.
Okay, so then, before I ask the question, then can you just refer, remind me or just go through that list so everybody's knowing what we're going to apply for?
So Ministry of Long-Term Care, Ministry of Health, potentially for the Markdale Hospital, OMAFRA, both for slaughter facility but also broadband, and MTO for regional transportation.
Perfect.
Okay, so we have four there. And one's, OMAFRA would be a multiple, a multi-pronged, we're there. So, so then, so again, Counsel Woodbury and Counsel Robinson are moving that. Any discussion on those delegation requests? Okay, seeing none, anybody opposed to those? That is carried, okay. And so as we move forward, Madam CEO, you'll keep us informed. Usually it's a week before that they let you know.
That's right.
So then you're screwing around, putting the reports together and all that fun stuff, right? So we should all have the travel time this time around. Just, I'm just curious for county council, is there quite a few that are attending the AMO? Okay, just if you want to show your hands. Okay, just going to switch screens here. Okay, so we have quite a few for the delegations in. And I don't know with virtual, if there's going to be an issue of the number of people that can attend virtually. It's going to be a whole new process, so we'll find out closer to the time from that point. But that's great, that's super. Okay, so our next motion is for adjournment. I don't know if there's any other business. Oh, wait, sorry, notice a motion. Are there any notice of motions? I hear none. Okay, so that's fine. Our next meeting will be in July. And so I have a motion by Counsel O'Leary, second by Counsel Hicks, Deputy Warden, that we adjourn. Anybody opposed to that? Well, that is carried. And everybody have a enjoyable week coming up. We got July 1st, so happy Canada Day, everyone, and be safe, everyone.